We're going to move to the regular agenda portion of our agenda tonight. We have one item on the agenda, 5TA 2020 Parking Text Amendment. I believe we have a presentation by Mr. Clough.
Yes, good evening, Chair Lassio and members of the Commission. This is Brian Clough, looking forward to giving you a summary here of the Parking Text Amendment for 5TA 2020 and hearing your recommendations on the proposal. Next slide. So, I apologize, you guys have, I know you've heard this once before and I know some of you have also participated in some of the other public outreach, so some of this might be a little bit repetitive, but I'm going to be going over some of the background information again and I'll try to make it as quick as possible. So, a bit of background here. So, we all know back on February 11th, 2020, the City Council held a work-study session to discuss parking in the downtown area in response to public concerns that many new developments that are being proposed and processed may not have enough parking, that much of the existing parking spaces are being used up by private businesses. At the work-study session, staff presented a comprehensive overview of the existing parking conditions, programs, and parking ordinance requirements that are currently in place. And as a result of the meeting, City Council directed staff to look into a number of parking-related items. Additionally, staff had received a citizen petition requesting some specific changes to the parking requirements related to multifamily residential hotels, office, and in-lu parking, among other parking management-related concerns. Next slide, please. So, here's a summarized list of those items identified by the City Council as a result of that February 11th, 2020 work-study session. And the next slide. And out of this list, highlighted here are the items that are within the purview of the zoning ordinance and therefore appropriate to address through this text amendment. The other items you see here that are not highlighted are parking management-related items that staff will continue to evaluate, however, they've not been included in this amendment. There are some items such as enhanced wayfinding that staff was already able to begin implementing over the last year by adding some signage and improving existing signage around the Museum of the West and Stagebrush Theater parking areas. And as conditions continue to normalize, staff will continue to evaluate these items with the goal of coming back with some other recommendations in the near future. Next slide, please. After the work-study session item in February of 2020, the Planning Commission then initiated a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to address the specific zoning-related items of that, and that was in October of 2020. Subsequently, staff presented a draft of the proposed ordinance changes to the Planning Commission for feedback. That was in March of this year. Shortly after the Planning Commission non-action hearing, staff conducted two virtual open-house meetings, which were well-attended. In addition to the public outreach meetings, staff also made information available on the changes through our planning and zoning subscriptions, our case information page on the web, and notifications to our interested parties list, as well as advertisements in the newspaper. Staff also conducted individual outreach efforts as necessary and kept interested parties informed through email. And staff gained a substantial amount of input from the community over the last several months, and we've included those comments and summary information in the staff report. Next slide, please. So, the specific request this evening is for the Planning Commission to take action and forward a recommendation to the City Council regarding the proposed ordinance changes to the parking requirements for these six items here on the screen. So, we're looking at travel accommodations, which are hotels, multifamily residential, office, and specific to call center type offices, downtown overlay parking waivers, the in-lu parking program, and special improvement requirements that are associated with public parking. As we discuss each of these items in more detail, it is important to note the proposed changes reflect evaluation of existing projects and represent a balanced effort to reasonably increase specific parking requirements while also addressing current trends. There may be other items or concerns that would require future changes that need to be backed up by a parking study. Next slide, please. So, the first item we'll be looking at within the text amendment are travel accommodations, hotel parking. So, the first change on the top bullet there is to reduce the per-room requirement from 1.25 down to one space per room. So, there's been a number of changes in the industry that have resulted in reduced parking needs in Old Town Scottsdale four hotels. These include rideshare services like Uber and Lyft, and then also bike share and scooter services and trolley service improvements in the area. Rideshare and these other services have had a significant impact on parking demand reduction. The demands required by the ordinance currently do not reflect this shift in parking demand. So, based on data available to the city, it's estimated that the current parking demand for hotel uses in the Old Town area is not more than 0.8 spaces per room. The proposed requirement of one space per room considers that this ratio is not limited to the Old Town area and also applies to hotels outside the Old Town area that are in more suburban areas of the city. We anticipate that hotel uses in the Old Town would continue to request parking reductions through a parking master plan, which is currently allowed by the code. And this would allow each one to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. Second, there is a new performance requirement on parking master plans that would address employee parking. So, there's been concerns with associated commercial uses that may be included with a hotel development and the associated employee parking demand. So, the base parking requirement for travel accommodations is always intended to account for employee parking that's needed to serve those uses. However, with requests to reduce parking in the Old Town area, there's concern that the demands associated with the additional commercial uses might not be fully addressed. So, to help address that, this new performance requirement for parking master plans requires the parking analysis to specifically address employee parking, including employees associated with the potential conference or other commercial spaces. This would also require the employee parking to be provided on-site. And the parking demands associated with the employee parking will be reviewed by staff as part of that plan in accordance with industry best practices. And then additionally, the proposed text amendment clarifies that these associated uses have a parking demand and associated requirement in addition to the base hotel requirement. There's also an exception included, which allows the first 5,000 square feet of associated uses to be included without additional parking. So, that's intended to accommodate models that cater to hotel guests rather than those with larger facilities that would be anticipated to draw patrons from offsite. And that 5,000-square-foot exemption there is new from the last time that you all saw this text amendment. Next slide.
Mr. Clough, if we could hold on just one quick second. Mr. Scarborough, you seem to have a comment or a question at this point?
Thank you, Chair Lassio. I was wondering, this is a multifaceted text amendment, and I guess I would maybe recommend and see if it's possible if we could pause at each point and have discussions for us to go through these six items and then go back and have a discussion on number one. Seems like it may be a longer route to get to the finish line. And I think as the information was just presented is fresh in our heads, it would be probably more appropriate for us to have conversations on number one and then move to two when we're done with one. That's just a suggestion, but just wanted to throw it out there.
I appreciate that, Mr. Scarborough. Mr. Curtis, I don't know that we've ever paused mid-presentation before, had discussion, and then continued the applicant's presentation. Is there any precedent set for that at all?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Scarborough, typically we wrap up the presentation and then there's typically public comment. I think what Brian has prepared is the ability to walk through each one of these after the presentation and facilitate the discussion because there are six items and we know that each one might have separate deliberations. So, my recommendation would be to finish the presentation, maybe answer any questions that you might have from Mr. Clough, have the public input, and then do the deliberations. And we could definitely break that up into six pieces if that suits the Commission. Thank you.
Mr. Scarborough, does that satisfy your...
For me, I'll yield to the group. It's just there's a lot to digest here and it's a very Herculean task, this text amendment for staff. So, but again, I'll yield to that recommendation.
Understood and agreed. Mr. Graham, you had a comment?
Oh, I was just going to say, Chair Lassio, that I think there's some merit to that request. Maybe if we, because it would be nice to listen to public comment, maybe at the end we can sort of, I don't know, partition
Yep.
...our comments categorically potentially. Maybe that could be a common ground. But I do think there is, I do see the merit for what Commissioner Scarborough is saying. Thank you.
Yeah, I do as well, and maybe it's best to let Mr. Clough continue, but then maybe break out our discussions after that one at a time. Commissioner, sorry, Mr. Clough, but Commissioner Tell you had a comment?
If I understand correctly, we go through the entire presentation first
Yep.
...get public comment and then come back. And basically, we would be doing the presentation over again. We would call for, you know, the hotel slide and we would discuss that.
Yeah, I don't know that we would do the presentation over, but we would probably deliberate maybe on each individual point as opposed to on the presentation as a whole.
And if I may add, Mr. Chairman, we could definitely tee up this individual slides that are based on the topics for, to ease the conversation, the discussion.
Agreed. My personal opinion is I think it might be nice to have the presentation and the public comment, and then I think it would be very appropriate for us to take each one of these individually and discuss through those. So, unless, and I don't know exactly where everybody else is on this, but if everybody else is seemingly okay with that, then maybe we just continue to move forward. I see some nods and I see some...
I was just going to say, we'll just have to take very good notes to remember what we were going to ask.
Yes. They gave us pens, we should take notes, I agree. Then it appears that we're okay to move forward with the presentation. Mr. Clough, thank you for the patience. We're ready to move forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commission. So, the next topic here, multifamily residential. So, the first bullet there is talking about a new guest parking requirement, which would be one space per eight units. And that's a citywide requirement that would apply both in Old Town and outside of Old Town. And then, secondly, there, modification of the per-unit requirements in the Old Town area to match the current requirement that's outside of Old Town. So, in summary, there A, B, C, and D shows the new ratio that's, which is currently applicable outside of Old Town. And then to the right shows what those existing ratios are or those requirements inside the Old Town. And with regard to multifamily residential, we've received a broad range of feedback regarding these requirements. We're hearing a lot from a lot of Old Town businesses and property owners that the existing requirement doesn't adequately address the demand and that there should be an additional requirement for guest parking. Most of these concerns appear to be related to the anticipation of future development impacts. We're also hearing from those in the development industry that the existing requirements are sufficient and that they're not experiencing parking supply issues. So, the proposed changes take many existing and approved developments into consideration and represent a balanced effort to increase those parking requirements while also addressing guest parking. So, the proposed per-unit rate for multifamily in Old Town, like I said, matches the existing ratio that's applicable outside of downtown, which on average results in an increase in the amount of required parking spaces. This ratio has been tested throughout Scottsdale for more than 20 years and has worked well. For guest parking, we benchmarked against 11 other Valley Cities, which average approximately one space per 6.3 units. Based on the unit mixes approved and in many other recent developments in Old Town Scottsdale, the proposed ratio in combination with the guest parking requirement on average results in about a 15% increase in the required parking for these multifamily residential developments. And that results in an average of about 1.65 spaces per unit. And that ratio does exceed the parking supply ratio that's outlined in the ITE Parking Generation Manual, which identifies a ratio of 1.1 for downtown cores, 1.2 for dense mixed-use urban settings, and then 1.6 for suburban models. So, the ratio is more in line with that suburban model. Additionally, the Urban Land Institute-based ratio for multifamily residential units in a suburban setting is in line with that 1.6. There has been scrutiny over the requirement for two- and three-bedroom units being reduced slightly from what's currently required in Old Town. Admittedly, there's the possibility that a development could have a 50/50 split of one- and two-bedroom units, and that would result in a wash. However, based on 12 multifamily developments in the Old Town area that staff evaluated, the average unit breakout is closer to 63% studio and one bed and 37% two- and three-bed, which results in more spaces being required. Plus, that guest parking requirement would be in addition to this per-unit ratio. Next slide. So, next here, talking about office. This one's a little bit more straightforward. It's to add a new category for call centers, higher-demand-type offices with a new requirement of five per thousand, which equates to one space per 200 square feet compared to the existing code, which just has a general office requirement of one space per 300. So, we have, we've heard concerns regarding these newer business office models that are much more intense than a standard office. There's a lot of other jurisdictions that already have separate categories for these and the industry standard, based on what we've seen generally seeks to provide that five-spaces-per-thousand ratio. Generally, I think this requirement's been accepted or well-taken, and most of the concerns that we've heard associated with this category are more related with parking management and requirements to have provided parking be free for tenants. So, that's a little bit of a separate issue from the actual parking requirement that will require some further evaluation. Next slide, please. And the number four here, the downtown overlay. So, the downtown overlay was created in 2003. At the time, there was a need to simplify parking requirements and there was a need to stimulate revitalization in the Old Town area, particularly encouraging second-story additions and residential units above retail. So, this is an option that allows for the addition of up to 2,000 square feet and up to four dwelling units to allot without any additional parking being required. The downtown overlay also simplifies the process of determining the parking requirement for existing properties. So, this proposed change, the changes here to the DO are strategically reducing the scale of what a property owner can do by reducing the waiver to 500 square feet of commercial space and then only one dwelling unit. It's anticipated that limiting these waivers as proposed will reduce the strain on public parking over time. Next slide, please. Number five, in-lu parking. So, this was a program that was started in 1985 to allow reinvestment on properties that were unable to provide parking on-site. So, similar to the downtown overlay waiver, it's a program that's intended to provide an option for many of our smaller Main Street-type properties who may be non-conforming and are unable to provide that parking on their property. This program allows them to make small improvements to their property without parking being an issue that they can't overcome by purchasing parking credits from the city. Historically, this program has received a lot of scrutiny since there's not a specific physical space associated with each credit. However, over time, funds received through the program have resulted in a significant amount of new public parking. So, you can kind of see a summary there. Since 1985, approximately 800 in-lu spaces have been acquired associated with the program. 496 of those were permanent spaces credited to properties. From '85 to '2009, just over $1 million was generated through the program, and approximately 855 spaces have been constructed using those funds. Next slide, please. So, the proposed changes to the in-lu parking program include elimination of the option to purchase new permanent in-lu spaces. It leaves leasing as an option and then also adding a new maximum property size of 20,000 square feet. So, the concept behind getting rid of the purchased in-lu spaces is to eliminate the creation of new permanent credits. The lease option would still bring in money into the fund for building parking. However, the parking credit is only applied to a property for as long as they need the space, and then it would go away. The proposed limitation on property size is geared towards the intent of the program, which is to help smaller property owners that don't have room to construct parking on-site. So, 20,000 square feet is also a number that's associated with our Plan Block Development District. It's the minimum property size for the Plan Block Development. So, that's part of where that number came from. If you have 20,000 square feet or more, you have quite a bit more options using that Plan Block Development District to help you out with what you can do on your property. Next slide, please. Number six here, the special improvement requirements. So, this is only applicable to developments that are constructing public parking as part of a private development. And it is specifically associated with dispersment of bonus funds. So, if a developer was rezoning a property and buying up height or density or floor area, there's a cost associated with those bonuses, and those costs are required to be used on special public improvements. The code allows those funds to be used towards construction of public parking as part of the private development. And in those requirements, if they are using those funds towards above-ground public parking, they only get a 25% credit of the cost of the actual construction of the space. So, the proposed change here would provide more credit for that above-ground structure of 100% as long as it's integrated with the building and includes enhanced design in accordance with the language that's in the code. So, this essentially would help incentivize construction of public parking as part of a private development. Next slide, please. So, this concludes the presentation. So, I'll end here with this slide summarizing the request and listing the six changes that are included within the text amendment. The City Council is looking forward to hearing this item next month on their May 4th agenda, and staff is looking forward to receiving your recommendations on the proposed changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clough. We appreciate that. One very quick question, I know we're going to move to public testimony. In our packet, we actually have seven different categories. You've got six, but I see that really we broke down multifamily residential into outside Old Town, downtown area, and within the Old Town downtown area. We kind of created that as a two and three. So, I think that when we do reference these, instead of referencing these one through six, we probably want to make sure that we get the right category associated with it because the staff report seems a little bit different than that final summary there. Just a point of clarification, not any comments necessary on that. I think now we're going to move, if there's not any questions for staff in general terms, we'll move to our public testimony, and then obviously we'll open up our discussions for the Commissioners. Any comments or questions before we move into public testimony at all? Seeing as none, we'll go ahead and move into public testimony. Our first speaker is Mr. French Thompson.
Commissioners, thank you for being here. I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. If you could state your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is French Thompson, 7148 East Main Street, Scottsdale, Arizona 85251. I've been a business owner on Main Street in downtown Scottsdale for 25 years. So, I'm speaking to you from personal experience and not by some industry standard or by some other outside entity is trying to talk to you about parking. I'm talking about what I know, what I've seen, what I've experienced in Scottsdale. The parking suggestions that the city is proposing is lowly inadequate for the multifamily units. They decided to do for a wash where they took a one-bedroom that was one space and moved it up to 1.3, but they took what used to be two spaces for a two-bedroom and moved it down to 1.7. If I do the math on that, that comes out to the same thing as three. So, they're not making any real changes on that. They also did what amazes me. They decided to take a bunch of the cities around Arizona and take an average of how many guest parking spaces they have. They came up with six as the average and then decided, well, you know, Scottsdale's really kind of special. We're not going to give them six. We're only going to have it one out of eight units. So, you as Commissioners, I believe your job is to watch over the city of Scottsdale and the citizens of Scottsdale, and you're not really here for the developers. You're really here for the city of Scottsdale itself. And so, these things that are coming up here to you are what I would consider a mediocre or a level-two city in the state of Arizona. I personally have lived here for 40 years. I don't feel that Scottsdale is a mediocre or a second-tier city. I've always felt that it was really a first-class city and we do things really well. But what they're proposing is a mediocre, level-two, average or below-average recommendation. 130 people signed a petition and submitted to the City Council a year and a half ago, and they were proposing for a one-bedroom, 1.5 spaces, a two-bedroom, two spaces, and one guest space for four units, each of four units. These are not unreasonable. However, if these units end up being underparked, they're going to be underparked for probably 30, 40, 50 years. So, my recommendation to you is err on the side of caution and have them provide more parking. The worst thing that would be happening is that there would be a parking available for everybody. But if these projects come in and they're underparked and they're not self-parked, you're going to ruin the city of Scottsdale for 30, 40, 50 years. So, I've been on this phone now for an hour and 15 minutes waiting to get this chance to speak for three minutes. It's now three minutes and 12 seconds. So, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, Mr. Thompson. Thank you for taking the time to wait on hold and speak. Our next speaker is going to be Mr. Bob Pejman.
Thank you, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We sure can, Mr. Pejman. If you could state your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes.
No, thank you. The name is Bob Pejman. Address is on record, 7130 East Main Street, Scottsdale. And right now, our current parking code for multifamily is one space for one bedroom and then two spaces for two bedrooms. As many have stated, including French and even Brian, this is a wash, what we're doing here. We changed the one-bedroom, upping it to 1.3, and then the one-bedroom goes on to 1.7, and we don't know what the future developments are going to be. It may not be the same ratio. For all you know, it's going to be more two-bedrooms. Now, most folks don't know that the downtown parking code used to be 1.5 spaces for one bedroom and two spaces for two-bedroom prior to 2009. And then somehow on the consent agenda, the one-bedroom got reduced from 1.5 to 1. This has got to go back to what it was. I don't see a reason that it was done and it should go back to what it was. Also, right now, there is no guest parking requirement in our code, which is absurd. Guests exist, visitors exist, but the question is, what is sufficient guest parking? And when you look at the 11 Valley Cities, once you take out, you know, the ones that don't have any requirement, and once you take the transit-oriented urban areas, the average is really one per 4.5 unit. But then you have to also factor in the guest parking demand for tourism. Unlike these other cities, downtown Scottsdale is a tourist draw, and so our definition of guest parking needs to be expanded beyond the occasional visitor to somebody that comes in, you know, for a week and stays, you know, from out of the state with somebody. So, having said all of this, why would we require anything less than one space per 4.5, which is what the average for these other cities are? Now, the other point I want to make is that... Now, the other point I want to make is that staff has told us that parking in downtown is free and is stated as free in the ordinance. But does that really mean that the required parking for the private developments need to be free once they build them? So this has to be made crystal clear in the ordinance to state that the required parking, you know, for the multifamilies, hotels, offices have to be free after they're built and the establishments can charge for it. Otherwise, what would stop them from charging for the parking, which will obviously push the parking to the street parking, which is happening with some of these establishments already? And also, on the guest parking, guest parking has to be unrestricted as far as access is concerned. If there's a gate that the guests can't go beyond, which pushes them back into the street, all the guest parkings are going to remain empty. And on the hotel parking, finally, I think the one space per one room is sufficient, understanding that it includes employee parking, which now have to be physically in designated spaces and also considering that the dining and the conference use will be part of the code in addition to the one space per room. But here's the point. If there is an automatic 20% staff reduction, which bypasses the council, we're essentially making the ordinance point A space per room. So I think it's fine, but I believe that the automatic reduction from staff needs to be removed. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pejman. Our next speaker is Ms. Sani Kurtley.
Good afternoon, Chairman Alessio and commissioners. My name is Sani Kurtley and I'm on the Cogs Board of Directors. That's the Coalition of Greater Scottsdale. Our address on Pinnacle Peak Parkway is on file. Hopefully this morning you received three images from me. At 6:15 this morning, I took camera shop outside the apartment building on the northeast corner of Granite Reef and Indian School. One picture was of the usual eight apartment cars that are parked in the former city bus stop on Granite Reef, which is a public street. Another image shows their apartment gated parking lot fully parked inside their complex. Now, the residential area on the western side of Granite Reef had a serious problem with the apartment cars parking in their residential area and the city helped them by posting permit required area two, which has worked. Well, it worked for them, but right now and this morning, in fact, I received a complaint from a residential owner on the north side of the apartment that cars are now parking on their residential street. So obviously, the current code is greatly underparked for this particular complex and as well as, of course, the Carter on Scottsdale Road where they use the egg parking lot after they close. So in real simple summary, Cogs fully supports the local business owners' recommendations. You've got to increase the parking requirements to include separate hotel park, employee parking, and to increase the per-apartment condo complex bedroom units and guests. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kurtley. Since we are all together here, when you said that you sent something out at around 6:15, each one of the commissioners kind of looked at each other with a shaking of the head sideways, which means I don't think that we received that. So if you have the opportunity...
Would you check with Tim Curtis, see where it is?
I'm looking at Mr. Curtis through a couple of pieces of Plexiglas here and he's shaking his head that he didn't receive it as well. So it'd be great if you're able to resend that again. It does seem like it could be pertinent information for us to have.
Thank you. Well, Tim, right now, is there some way to expedite it to you at your active meeting?
That's a great question. We'll check into that and see if there's an opportunity for us to be able to take a look at those images that you sent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kurtley.
Ms. Atkinson, if you press star six, you'll be able to unmute your phone. Ms. Atkinson, if you click star six on your phone, you'll be able to unmute.
Maybe we should move to our next speaker, but then hold a space for Ms. Atkinson if we can get the technology to work. Why don't we do that? And I'll go ahead and just make sure that I ask at the end to see if Ms. Atkinson has been able to reconnect. So we'll move our next speaker, Ms. Janet Wilson. I know that if you're able to hit star six on your device, you should unmute, if that helps.
I'm here.
Oh, very good. Is this Ms. Wilson?
Yes, it is.
Very good. Ms. Wilson, if you could state your name and address for the record, then you have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. My name is Janet Wilson. I reside at 8269 East Delta Unit Drive, Scottsdale. My family has owned properties in downtown Scottsdale for over 50 years. So we have buildings in almost all the different districts. Through the years, we have been very concerned about the parking, numerous complaints from our tenants. Several years ago, I've had to put up tourway signs on all my parking spaces, which looks like, well, it doesn't look very nice. And I've had to deal with going out and getting petitions to change the parking hours so that other tenants will not park in our parking spaces. So it's a continuous problem in downtown. Now, I won't go into too much more because the other speakers have done such a great job of explaining it to you. I will say that I have a problem when Mr. Cub, everybody says, well, refer to industry standards. We are unique. We're not, we're unique. And we're also unique from the rest of the city. We're downtown, we're all that has come. And that's why we're happy, because we're unique in terms of your experience, industry standards. And it's common sense down here about what we need. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. We appreciate that. We'll move to our next speaker, Mr. Don Edwards.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can. If you could state your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Don Edwards and I own a business at 7121 East Fifth Avenue in downtown Scottsdale. And I admit, I'm a little late to the game as far as what's going on with all the respective parking spaces for apartments and hotels and businesses. But I can tell you that I've been in, I had my store here for 23 years. So I've seen this area change dramatically. When I first moved here, there was just a parking lot in the back behind my building. Now there's the parking structure, which is, as they call it, the third avenue structure. And I've been battling the city for about six years now in reference to parking that has to do with the Galleria. I've been to many council meetings and planning commission meetings and talked to many people at the city and at the police department in reference to enforcing the three-hour parking and enforcing parking in the structure to try to get the employees out of the structure so that, you know, so customers can come to my store. As I'm sure many of you know, we already have a bad parking issue and we need solutions and not more situations to make the parking worse. My opinion is, the city needs to figure out what it wants to be. Does it want to be a big tourist area and spend, I know they spend millions of dollars advertising to get people to Scottsdale. But if there's nowhere for the people to come to Scottsdale to park and exist, then why spend the money? And we should just become a commercial complex and city center and get rid of all the retail and stop advertising and waste the money to get people to come here. The Galleria has become a white elephant in this area for probably not just my street, but all the other streets surrounding the Galleria, including all the streets on the east side of Scottsdale Road. You know, this year, if the Galleria is not working, which has been a godsend because there's plenty of parking here. And I witnessed this spring and this season that there were many days when the parking structure, the third avenue parking structure, was completely full without the employees of the Galleria. So I know I've talked to city council and staff many times and they sit there and they tell me, well, there's no issues with parking. Well, let me tell you that there is a huge issue with parking and it's time for this commission and the city council to stop kicking the can down the road and come up with some solutions. And not having adequate parking for all the new development in this area is a huge issue. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Our next speaker is Cindy Simonson, Ms. Cindy Simonson.
Hi, Chairman Alessio and commissioners. I, like Ms. Wilson, our family has also owned property in Old Town for almost 50 years. I get regular comments and complaints from my tenants about not enough parking in the Fifth Avenue area. Also, as Mr. Edwards mentioned, about Galleria employees using the Third Avenue structure when their own parking structure remains almost vacant. And the city needs a solution to stop that. Also, I think while, yes, Old Town is relying on tourists, they also need to rely on locals to survive. And if parking continues to be the problem it is today, the locals will start to minimize their visits to Old Town. And that's not going to be good for anybody. Residential parking, basing the parking in Old Town on residential parking outside of Old Town is completely inadequate. Another person spoke about outside of Old Town being inadequate. I went to visit a friend in a condo near Scottsdale and Shea who told me, oh, you should park across the street in this other condo place or in the retail center around the corner because they don't have enough guest parking in here. And that's what I ended up having to do. My son had an apartment near Old Town and if I wanted to visit him, I had to find on-street parking, which isn't good for the residential, you know, the residential areas surrounding those apartment complexes. So following what is inadequate outside of Old Town for Old Town is not going to solve any solution. And I think that pretty much sums up. Oh, the other question I have is around the proposed changes around call centers. I think you said it was based on one parking space per 200 square feet. My question, and I don't know the answer to this, but I'm guessing you can get more than one call center rep in 200 square feet. It's probably closer to about 10. And how many of those people are coming in vehicles and needing to park? So is 201 per 200 square feet adequate? I'm skeptical. So that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Ms. Simonson. We'll move back to our last speaker, Ms. Marilyn Atkinson. We happen to know if Ms. Atkinson still is on the line by chance?
Chair Alessio, she is still on the line, it seems. And we did a follow-up call with her and she did not answer. So she might still be on, but, and we are prompting her to unmute, but I'm not certain that she is able to do so.
Gotcha. And if she was to unmute, it would be pound six, correct?
Correct. Or, I'm sorry, star six.
Star six. Thank you for the clarification there. So we'll give Ms. Atkinson maybe just a couple more moments here. Star six would unmute your phone to see if you're available to speak. Doesn't sound like technology is working with us very well with Ms. Atkinson. Ms. Atkinson, we would, unfortunately, if we're not able to have you speak tonight, we would definitely like to get your comments in writing sent to the city. All right. Then if unfortunately, we're not going to be able to hear from Ms. Atkinson, I think we'll go ahead and close public comment. Did the applicant have anything additional that they wanted to add based on the public
Chair Alessio, members of the commission, this is Brian Cleff. I'm happy to provide any additional information regarding any specific comments that the commission would like additional information on.
Very good. Thank you. As Commissioner Scarborough had mentioned, we do have a large number of items here. Again, it's either six or seven, but we do have a number of different items that we can address. My understanding is that while this is one case that we're hearing, that we could actually make comments individually on each one of these different recommendations. So I guess there's a possibility that we might be able to make a recommendation for approval on item number one theoretically and then make a different recommendation on item two and three. Is that a correct statement, Mr. Curtis?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. I know that the council is anxious to see what the planning commission has to say tonight. They're targeting May 4 to hear your recommendations and have their own dialogue about the proposals here tonight. So there are six or seven items and we're looking to try to get the cleanest motion that we can to get to council. But we are aware that there may be different attitudes by different commissioners and different recommendations and so forth. So if we could tackle them individually and try to sum up with a simple motion, that would be great. But even if a simple motion isn't possible, we would be happy to collect the variety of recommendations on each one and assemble those for the city council. So we'll leave it entirely up to you. And I think maybe Mr. Padilla might want to add something in terms of the protocol with the recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Padilla.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, Chair members of the commission, you can make a recommendation in parts. So if you take the suggestion of Commissioner Scarborough, you can take the first one, travel accommodations, you can debate that, and then you can make your recommendation on that. Then go to the next one, I think it's multifamily, debate that, make your recommendation on that. In the end, you will have covered all of those. The council would have had then your position and your recommendations. You could do it that way or you could then try to make a one motion and include all your recommendations in that one motion. Problem with that is you may have different numbers on the recommendations. You may have three people or four people liking one proposition by the applicant and others not liking it. That won't fit into one motion. So I think you might want to go item by item.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, now this is a little bit more complex than our traditional hearings that we have, the cases that we typically look at. So this does have multiple parts to it. Well, let's, if it's okay with the commission, let's go ahead and take these one at a time as it relates to our discussion. And then as we're getting into our discussions, then maybe it will be And then as we're getting into our discussions, then maybe it will become clear how we might want to move forward, either individually or in totality, as far as a recommendation. So unless there's some questions, it looks like there might be one on at least procedure. If, maybe we can talk about procedure first before we get into individual items. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, thank you, Chair Alessio. So we could, in theory, we could have six motions. Is that correct, Mr. Padilla?
You could have six motions on each item.
Okay.
Because you could have different members voting in different forms, in essence. You might have, for example, travel accommodations, the recommendation might be for two.
Yeah, I guess my question is, I think if I could be a little bit predictive, maybe what might happen here is that two or three of these, the commission just says, yeah, we like that. Maybe we group those together. Who knows? And then there may be another, I guess, number or section or category where the motion gets made and maybe different members have different reasons to oppose it, right? And so then you have, you're trying to get four people to agree as it is, and you might have growing, you know, opposition around that for different reasons. Is that correct? And that may, that may forestall things for the commission.
That's correct. That's what I was trying to explain earlier. If you're trying to do one motion with people having different points of view
Right.
On different items, that would be difficult. So maybe the best course would just be to take them one at a time, debate them, and then vote to recommend to city council, say, travel accommodations, make your recommendation on that. And then go to the next one.
I think that's possibly a way to go. One of the other things that I'm a little bit concerned about as I read through this is that, as I go through this, there may be a, somebody who may want to make a motion in totality that said, for theoretically, hey, I like everything, I would like to make one motion. Or, I don't feel like I have enough information, I may want to make a motion for denial with some recommendations to council. So kind of almost feel like this is something we need to dive in the pool, start swimming, and find out where we might go before we decide exactly which buoy we're going to land on. I'm just thinking through that. Commissioner Scarborough?
Just wanted one point of clarification. You may have mentioned that there are seven bullet points. Everything else is six, where multifamily was sort of combined in. So just a point of clarification here, we're going to hit each one of the seven bullet or items.
Correct. If we were all to look at page five of our packet, staff did a really nice job of breaking out, in this situation, all seven items. And really, the only difference between what we see here on our screen and what we have in front of us is that they broke multifamily into two sections.
Right.
One would be outside of the downtown area, one would be inside of the downtown area. So, and I think that is a pretty important distinction as it relates to multifamily. So we may want to consider looking at all seven of these. Since it is broken up into seven in our packet, I think that probably would be appropriate, even though the screen has six and it had combined multifamily into one category. So.
Chair Alessio, unless you brought that, you're the only one that has that.
Ah, I did bring it.
Packet.
Yes, I did. I did spend some money on some copies for myself.
I mean, not to say that we haven't read it or we don't see it's on the screen, but you keep referencing the packet. I just wanted to make sure you know that we don't all have it in front of us.
I do. Thank you for that. So what I'll do is I'll lead us through what I believe to be the seven items in the packet. And then I'll take some good copious notes here and make sure that we do follow through on that. So if we're comfortable with procedure, we'll kind of go through these one at a time. Is there any other comments on procedure before we talk about substance seen as none? Then item number one, which is consistent with what we see on the screen here, is the travel accommodations, the hotel section. Mr. Clough, is there a possibility you could bring up, there you just did it, well done. This does give us a little bit more detail specifically on the hotel section. Who would like to start us off on the conversation in this section? Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Alessio. Mr. Clough, could you refresh us on the data that was used to come to the determination of 1.0 versus a 1.25?
Absolutely, Chair Alessio, Commissioner Scarborough, and members of the commission. So over the last, you know, several years, as hotel developments have been coming through the process for development in Old Town, Scottsdale, almost all of them have come through with parking master plans requesting reductions in their per-room requirement. Most of what we've seen is that there are, there are some justifications that demonstrate that less than a .8 is required. We've seen some around, you know, .5, .6 that would accommodate that. However, there's a lot of different models out there and it's been pretty consistent that has been coming through the process that a .8 was the, kind of the baseline that has been accepted through those reviews and those parking master plans that have been provided and ran through the planning commission and city council. So the reason that this is not all the way down to a .8, but instead is at a .1, is as I previously mentioned, that this is also applicable to outside of Old Town. So there's a lot of different hotel business models out there that are more of your resort style hotels that a, less than a .1 may not be appropriate. So that's, that's kind of where we got to the .1 there. And then there's still the opportunity for a parking master plan to be submitted and request a reduction beyond the 1.0 if appropriate.
So within the data, I heard you reference models. Within these plans, parking plans that you're reviewing from previous projects, was there surveyed information provided in those, or is it just theoretical modeling?
Commissioner Scarborough, when I mentioned model, that was not intended to be related to a study model, but instead a, more of a business model. So different hotel types based on room counts and associated conference area, meeting facilities, and ancillary commercial uses.
So just to make sure I'm asking this appropriately, I'm curious to understand, within these parking studies, the derived number is come to by actually having surveyed information of existing uses in the vicinity?
Commissioner Scarborough and members of the commission, that's correct. Those studies typically include a range of data, including national data and local data, usually including parking counts specific to hotel developments in Scottsdale that are comparable to the type that's being proposed.
Okay. And then just a clarification, as we're talking about this, we're talking about private parking, not public parking. And so the intent here is that this travel use would self-park and not be a burden to public parking. And so even with the reduction to 1.0, staff does not foresee a negative impact to public parking in the vicinity?
Commissioner Scarborough and members of the commission, that's correct.
And within that 1.0 number, employee parking is considered? Can you, I'd like to dial into this a little bit. How is employee parking considered in the, without using a master, parking master plan? But in the simple equation of changing from 1.25 to 1.0, how is employee parking considered?
Commissioner Scarborough and members of the commission, historically, the per-room requirement for the hotel has always intended to account for employees that are associated with the hotel. Staff typically does not get into the details of which parking spaces that are associated with a hotel are required for employees or guests or the associated commercial uses, aside from what those additional requirements would be per the ordinance. Based on the data that we've received through parking master plans that are justifying reductions in this base requirement, those, the studies within those account for employee parking as well. So we feel comfortable that this 1.0 ratio is rather conservative in that it's been demonstrated that the .8 ratio, and in some cases lower than that sufficiently, accounts for the full demand.
And based on the data you have, what are you seeing? You're saying .8 covers peak demand, but from the data you're seeing, where is peak demand typically coming in for hotel uses?
Are you referring to time of day and day of week?
Not at all. I'm speaking generally. So I would assume I'm, let me rephrase that. I guess I'm looking for peak demand. So whatever peak may be for that industry.
Commissioner Scarborough, members of the commission, if you're referring to looking at maybe a number of different hotels and picking out the one that requires the most, then I think that is what we would be referring to as the .8. In that, we feel that the .8 would accommodate all of those cases, and in some cases would, less than a .8 would be appropriate.
Okay. So my thoughts here, and I guess I'll just throw out my thought, is that I can understand the 1.0 being conservative. The .8 sounds like it covers maximum use potential there. And to me, if employee parking is already accounted for in the 1.0, I would like to see something in this amendment that clarifies that there has to be designated parking for employees at peak demand of employees. So it can park 1.0, but aside from the parking master plans, just in this base understanding, I would like to see language that quantifies the number of employees at peak demand and that be included in, not in addition to the 1.0, to ensure that employee parking, when it's at its peak, is not burdening public parking. That's my thoughts.
So you're saying in addition to the 1.0 for public, for employee parking? Is that what I heard?
Not in addition to.
Not?
It just needs to be specifically accounted for. So designated spots.
Gotcha.
Is one of my thoughts here that needs to be addressed.
Gotcha.
As part of this text amendment. Also, with this understanding that developments can use a parking master plan to further reduce the number to .8, I personally don't have an objection to this. I would, though, however, amend this text amendment to allow staff only a 10% variance, and any variance above that, up to the 20%, would be reviewed by the appropriate board And those are, right now, my only comments, but I'd like to hear what my other commissioners have on this topic.
Very good. I know Commissioner Urtell has a comment. Just, I want to just ask one additional question, Commissioner Urtell, if you'll allow me, that kind of goes with your comment, and it really is for Mr. Clough. Mr. Clough, understanding that we're talking about private parking here, and we're talking about doing a 1.0 per room, is there any contemplation within our code that states, within the parking amendments here, that states that this parking would be at no cost to the employee or at no additional cost to the hotel guest? Because I could see that a downtown hotel that charges $25 a day for an employee or $25 a day for a guest, those people may save that $25 per day and park in one of our free parking structures that we have that might be very close and adjacent to, and they would use the free public parking, and then we would have a private parking structure that was nearly empty, and we would be using our free public parking to accommodate employees and guests. So does any of this contemplate cost associated with private parking?
Chair Alessio and members of the commission, there's not anything in the new that's in the ordinance. However, there already is a requirement in the code specific to downtown that all required parking needs to be free. So that would also apply to these hotels.
So required parking for employees or required parking for guests as well?
Both. It would include all of the above.
Okay. So this would be free parking. So we would not be basically pushing guests and employees to our free public parking. There would be no incentive, if you will, for them to move to the free public parking based on what we see here today. Commissioner Urtell?
Thank you, sir. The reduction per room requirement makes sense. It feels right. But I'm still curious about the data. And I heard what you told Commissioner Scarborough, that you've gathered data nationally and locally, and I believe that you've done actual counts, parking counts, on local hotels. But I'm still curious, maybe too suspicious. You get parking studies from the developer who buys them from a consultant. And, you know, things have changed the last year, two years, three years, given Uber, given pandemics and so forth. How current is the local data and how relevant is the national data? And how, you know, relevant is anything that is over a couple of years old? These are not questions that I would expect you to answer off the top of your head. You know, it's, you know, a qualitative question. But I'm just concerned that we really don't know, let me put it this way, I'm concerned that I don't know what I'm doing. I began this by saying that the reduction from 1.25 down to 1 makes sense, but just because it makes sense doesn't make it right. And I do know that there's never a perfect answer, something that fits all, which reminds me, tangentially, or parenthetically, I don't think it makes sense to have the same parking requirements for downtown, for Old Town, as it does for the outlying areas. You know, as you've said, they're different. I don't know if you use the word model for that, but I will. They're two different models. Anyway, I'm just concerned that our data is not current, that it's not always relevant. It is just that it's not always reliable. One of the public speakers said, we don't want to be kicking the can down the road. And I agree with that. But for me to say, well, I don't know, but it sounds good, I'll pass this along, that just doesn't, I don't believe that's what our job is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Urtell. Commissioner Young, sorry, Vice Chair Young.
Thank you, Chair Alessio. You know, I think I want to build on Commissioner Urtell's comment there because, you know, what I'm going to say now is really covering, you know, items one, two, three, and four, is that I think it'd be extremely important for us to have current data to be able to make our decision on how to move forward with this. Because, I mean, the data could be, hey, we need way more parking than what's being reported, or we don't need that much. Clearly have a parking problem in downtown. What that solution is, you know, Mr. Clough was given a task here to work on an amendment to the parking text. And I don't know if, and me and Commissioner Scarborough talked about this the other day, that, you know, maybe he doesn't have all the tools that he needs to be able to accurately give a good recommendation on how to move forward with this. So I'm hesitant to, you know, want to make a recommendation on most of these items because, quite frankly, I don't know. And I don't think we really do know. The, you know, COVID is
I don't know. And I don't think we really do know. The, you know, COVID has completely changed how people are using parking, because they're not going places as much. You know, recently, and I'd say in the last three to four weeks, I'm starting to see the downtown get a little busier, and more people are out and about. But I'm still seeing the Galleria parking lot, where I have, my office is right close to, those businesses are still, I mean, you could shoot a cannon through some of those office buildings and not hit a person. I mean, it's, there's nobody there. So I think, you know, we don't really know who the offenders are now, as far as who is gobbling up all the parking, because, you know, trends have changed. So, you know, I'm, you know, I was reading through all this data that, you know, Mr. Clough did a ton of brain damage putting together. It was a lot of work. However, I think taking national data and old data is not necessarily always relevant data to what we're talking about in today's world. So I didn't really have a question for Mr. Clough. It was more of a statement, so I just kind of wanted to air that opinion to the commission before we get into all these other things. I just sort of wanted to cut to the chase and say, I think we need to have a real current parking study done of the downtown area to be able to understand what we really need to do down here. So with that, I'll yield back to the chair.
Thank you for your comments, Vice Chair. I do appreciate and respect those as well. One of the things that I looked at was, on page 3, one of the recommendations that city council had provided to staff was, the first bullet point was to perform a parking study. And I'm sure that Mr. Clough has a significant amount of effort put in place here to create the information and gather information, and to be able to make some recommendations. But I also am kind of in the same place where you are. We're a relevant parking study, and I don't know that a current parking study in the current condition that we are today, in a, we may say, middle of pandemic, moving out of a pandemic, I don't know exactly, we could probably ask all six of us, we might come up with different opinions, but we're in some form of a pandemic still, and it is impacting our parking. But I think that a relevant parking study at the appropriate time is probably necessary, not only comparing us to other comparable cities, but also taking into consideration our city, and taking a look at the 9,000 free parking spaces that we have. And, you know, one of the things, I was surprised by reading this report, I didn't realize we had 9,000 free parking spaces through parking structures, through surface parking lots, and through street parking. I didn't realize we had that many. So one of my, you know, one of my questions that I had was, when a parking study is done, would they come back and say, hey, you have 9,000 parking spaces free, you need 12,000, you need 15,000, you need 6,000? We don't know what that is. And it's no slight on Mr. Clough and the staff or the efforts that they put into place. I just don't know that we have the appropriate study yet at the appropriate time to be able to make all of those decisions quite yet. So I'm just kind of supporting your comments.
Yeah. And I might follow up, Chair Lassio. You know, you mentioned the 9,000 parking spaces. And, I mean, maybe the parking spaces are just not in the right places. Maybe it's inconvenient. You know, those parking garages that we're seeing are, you know, we've got the, the one, you know, west of Scottsdale Road off of, what's it, 5th there, that, you know, that's, that's a full one. That's kind of in the middle of the Old Town area. But then there's some other outlying garages. There's one over that's by the hospital that's completely subterranean with one level at ground level, which seems to me to be an underutilized space, that, you know, that could be four stories tall and service a lot more people. And, I don't know, maybe that was the plan. I don't know why that whole thing was put underground. But, you know, maybe it's that the parking spaces that are available, they're just inconveniently located. So.
And we may have a wayfinding issue as well.
Yeah. And that might, you know, come to light with this, if there's a parking study that's done, to find out, you know, there's a traffic study that says, hey, this is where all the intensity is, this is where the most vehicles are, this is where we need to have a bigger or another parking garage. So again, I don't know what I don't know right now.
Point well taken.
Thank you.
Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Chair Lassio. I am sure learning a lot from my fellow commissioners, and I appreciate Mr. Clough's presentation. We are learning a lot. We're also learning what we don't know. There's a lot we don't know. I think there is also a lot that we do know. And I wanted to ask Mr. Clough if he would answer a few questions, if he would humor me here. And if I could start with the, because I think that, and I kind of agree with Commissioner Urtell, I mean, the, so we're talking about hotels, and reduction from 1.25 to a 1.0, that on the papers, that on paper sounds reasonable, but it's, there's kind of some other stuff going on there. And one of the things I wanted to ask about was this variance, this administrative variance that Commissioner Scarborough actually brought up. And first, my first question, Mr. Clough, is how long has that variance, that administrative variance been in place, if you may or may not, may or may not know the history of that?
Chair Lassio, Commissioner Graham, I don't know off the top of my head when that was first put into place. I do know, you know, as far back as I've been dealing with it, which would be at least the last 10 years, I believe that's been in place.
What is the, let me back up here. What, so there's some sort of application or something, and I'm also kind of looking at Mr. Padilla here. There's some kind of application that the applicant can make that to request a 20% reduction or abatement in the parking requirements. Is that correct?
Yes, Chair Lassio and Commissioner Graham, the code allows parking reductions through a parking master plan. So this would be the same document that would go to city council and planning commission for requests that are more than 20%. However, with that same plan and parking analysis, the code allows staff to administratively provide up to a 20% reduction.
Do you know, in just the Old Town area or the downtown area, do you know the average number, right now, kind of the average number of rooms that would be required for the, under the existing parking code? I'm trying to get a sense of what 20%, how many spots that is.
Or can I please clarify, are you saying the average number of rooms for a hotel?
No, I'm saying, what would on paper be the average number of required spots before any administrative reduction in the, in the, in the Old Town area? Because the, asking for the average number of rooms is, well, it's like, it's 1.25 for this, or 1 point or 2 for that. I'm trying to get a sense of how, how many spots in a typical, how many parking spots in a downtown hotel does 20% mean?
Sure. If I can, I can try to help clarify that. So if you're looking at a hotel that's, you know, somewhere around 165 to 170 rooms, at the 1.25, you're looking at about 210 spaces that would be required there. Reducing that to a 1.0 would be 160 to 170 spaces. So you're looking at about a reduction of about 40 spaces in that scenario.
That's, I mean, I think the average person would probably say that's pretty significant. I suppose my question is, is, do you, what percentage of, in the downtown area, do hotels request that variance? Is that like a kind of a perfunctory, like it's a given, they all request it, or is it more of an exception?
Commissioner Graham, what I can say is, over, you know, I would say over the last four to five years, I believe almost all of them have requested a parking reduction through the use of a parking master plan in the Old Town area.
Okay. And all of them. And you know what the quantities say in the last five years of hotels that have been added? Like 10 or 5, or, pardon my ignorance?
Yeah, I apologize, Commissioner Graham. I don't, I don't have the specific number, but, you know, I think it's in, reasonably in the 5 to 10 range.
And they've, and they've all requested the variance?
Correct, to the best of my knowledge.
Have, of those 5 to 10 applicants that have requested the variance, how many has, how many have been administratively denied?
Commissioner Graham, members of the commission, I have, I was not personally involved in all of those. I'm not aware of any that have been denied. There's different, different ranges of requests based on each specific scenario. So, you know, rather than a denial, it would have probably been negotiated to a lesser reduction that would be more in line with the specific requirements for that particular development.
Okay. So that's, that's a guess how it hypothetically would have gone. But can you say for certain if any, if, if, can you say, have any been totally denied, or have they've all been accommodated to some degree? Is that correct?
Commissioner Graham, I can't personally say for certain either of those. We have other staff on the line, and Tim Curtis as well. If they are aware of anything there, they might have additional information to add. But me personally, I can't answer that for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. I don't know if you happen to know that answer off the top of your head.
No, unfortunately, I don't off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
So it seems, though, that, well, we all, I mean, we heard Mr. Clough say that between the 5 to 10 in the past five years, every single one, every single hotel has requested the administrative reduction, parking reduction. And I think it kind of seems like they've all gotten it. Maybe. Not for sure, but maybe. So it's kind of, to me, it kind of feels like we moved this from 0.1, 1.25 to 1, we are moving it closer to 0.8. The other side of that is that I wanted to talk about next, is the 5,000 square foot exemption? Can we talk a little bit about that, Mr. Clough?
Absolutely, Mr. Graham, Commissioner Graham. And before we get into that, I noticed Randy Grant has his hand raised. Can we allow an opportunity for Randy Grant to provide some input?
Please. We would love for Randy Grant to provide some, some input. Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I believe that all of the hotel reductions have been approved, and the reason is because I think it's almost universally accepted that 1.25 is more than is needed, given the rise of Uber and Lyft and alternative transportations, and you don't have rental cars being as prevalent as they were five years ago, because ride sharing has kind of taken that share of the market. But I also want to say, parking isn't an exact science, and to some extent, it's based on averages. If we look at the city of Tempe, their parking conditions are much, much different. Because when new projects come in, they really don't care if you provide parking for them, because they want to sell you spaces in the parking garages that the public has paid for and built, and that they charge people to use. So the conditions with national comparisons is also very difficult, because anybody that goes to San Francisco knows that you pay $50 a night to park your car, or you don't park. There's no parking on the street, per se. And so they get away with, with charging a lot. We also know that, to some extent, parking is a matter of convenience. And if I can park on the street rather than park in a garage, I might well do it, even though a space is provided in the garage. But, and I want to have total respect for the people that do business in downtown, and I think sometimes they feel like the staff is working on behalf of the developer, or that the city council is not considering their, the conditions that they bring up. And that's absolutely not true. We have to provide a balance. And at current costs, providing 20 additional spaces would cost a property owner a million dollars. It's about $50,000 a space to provide parking. So in the interest of getting redevelopment and revitalization to occur, we don't really want people to provide a lot of extra parking. We'd like to be conservative and make sure that places are parking themselves. But we're also not going to be able to park for the day after Thanksgiving, which is not a current example. But, but if you park a shopping center for the day after Thanksgiving for 364 days, you've got a lot of empty parking spaces. And so we have to be aware that there is a balance between inviting and accepting opportunities for revitalization, and the costs that are incurred with taking advantage of those opportunities. One thing that we always try to consider in downtown parking is, what's an acceptable walking distance? And if we look at two blocks as being an acceptable walking distance, we did the, the exercise of looking at radius around the parking structures that are available, and two blocks is about as far as you have to walk to get to public parking. In the West Main example, the parking lot for the Stage Press Theater and the old America West lot are less than two blocks away from most of the businesses. Now, it's true that some of the businesses, some people will go to a business, and if they can't park right in front, they might leave. But again, we can't make parking convenient in all instances, but we can make sure that there's an adequate supply for most people. And most people are willing to walk a half a block or a block to, to parking. So I, I'm sorry to belabor that point, but I, you had expressed frustration that you didn't have the answers, and you're not alone. There really aren't any right answers. We're trying to make sure that there's adequate parking in most circumstances, on most days, not necessarily on Art Walk Night when there is a game going on. We're going to have conditions where there's shortages, but we're trying to provide parking accessible to most people on the, on the lion's share of the days when the use is required. And what we're seeing is changing conditions every few months. A year ago, we would not have anticipated the change to the way people are using hotel parking. So a year from now, it may be different. And I agree with you, we don't have the data to support building a whole lot of new public parking. And I think this, this application tonight is, is simply based on our experience in providing parking for project-related demand. And people have brought up, you need to have guest parking. We completely agree. But outside of downtown, there are dozens and dozens of multifamily complexes, and we get very few complaints about not having available parking. We agree that there should be guest parking provided outside of gates where it's accessible. But again, in the interest of revitalization, we don't want to be dramatically exaggerated in the amount of parking that's required, because that will have the, the effect of discouraging reinvestment. I apologize for going on, Mr. Chairman, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. We always appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
Mr. Graham, do you still have some more thoughts?
Oh, Mr. Chair, is it okay if I continue with my questions?
Please.
Oh, wow. Thank you. And we always, like, you know, like the chair said, we always appreciate Mr. Grant coming on and talking to us. Mr. Grant, if you could still hear me, I don't know if he disconnected or not, I don't know if he or may or may not know off the top of his head about that question that I had, that no one was unsure of the answer, whether administratively in the last five years, they have approved, because they're, all the, all the downtown hotels have requested. And they, he said, I think he said, if I understand, they have all approved the administrative exception.
That is correct. Not all have been 20%.
Okay. No, thank you very much. I wanted to ask, I don't know who, I don't know whom I'm going to ask. I'll assume I go back to Mr. Clough, but I'm always pleased to hear from Mr. Grant. I wanted to ask about this 5,000 square foot exemption. And does that, does that basically kind of mean that every hotel is 5,000 square, when it comes to parking requirements, that every hotel is 5,000 square feet smaller?
Chair Lassio and Commissioner Graham, the idea behind the 5,000 square foot exemption would be, you know, geared towards those ancillary commercial uses like conference space or restaurants that are within the same building as the hotel.
Okay.
And, and the 5,000 square feet, that first 5,000 wouldn't require parking, because at that size, you know, based on some other hotels throughout the city that we looked at. at, we'd anticipate that's not large enough to, to have a real, real draw, larger, larger events, or your, your destination-type facilities that are, that are going to have a, more of a local draw, that are going to bring in people who need to park, they'd be geared more towards catering towards the, the residents, or the, the folks that are in the hotel.
Because we, when we look, when we think about these, these parking requirements for hotels, that is kind of, you think about that as like per, per key, per room. That doesn't reduce the number of rooms, is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Graham.
Okay, so if, if a room, if a, if a hotel has 200 rooms, it's, that's not going to cut away from that. Is that going to reduce the required parking though, that 5,000, that 5,000 square foot exemption, in any other way, like, I guess only, does that, what, what counts is, do like, does like a restaurant count towards that exemption, or some other sort of commercial use that's categorically different?
Yes, Commissioner Graham, a, a hotel that maybe that had a, a ground floor restaurant within it that was less than 5,000 square feet, would be able to have that restaurant and park it just based on the per-room requirement of 1.0 spaces per, per key.
So, you could have, you could have a 3,000 square foot lobby, or a 2,000 square foot lobby and a 3,000 square foot restaurant, and you wouldn't have to provide a single parking spot?
Not for tho, not specific to those uses. It's anticipated that the parking provided for the number of rooms in the facility would accommodate the needs associated with that space.
What do you, what, as far as, because I know that, Mr. Cluff, you and your colleagues have studied this so much, what, is that, is that pract, is, do, and I know that you looked at other comparison cities around the valley, do other cities have that exemption?
Commissioner Graham, I, we, we didn't specifically pull data from other cities relative to hotels. The, the data that we were working with was based on existing hotel developments within the city of Scottsdale.
Do you, are you aware of any other cities that have an exemption like that?
I, I can't specifically say off the top of my head.
Mr. Curtis, do, are you aware of any that have, any sort of exemption like that?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Graham, not specifically, but we are aware that different cities have different parking requirements for hotels that may include additional parking for auxiliary uses, and oftentimes do not. You could imagine some of the limited service hotels having some adjunct conference space, but it's not something that is a highly demanding space, but it could be around 5,000 square feet. There's cafes, as well as some retail, that is typically not parked in hotels.
Yeah, you think about what the kinds of, you know, I mean, special events, conference rooms, cafes, coffee, coffeehouses, restaurants, et cetera. I just, because that 5,000, there's no exemption in anything, that, that's completely new, that would be completely new in the parking code, is that correct? That's kind of a new idea that's been introduced.
Mr. Chairman, oh, go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Cluff, thank you.
Commissioner Graham, members of the commission, you're, you're correct, the exemption is new. However, also new with this amendment is clarification of the requirements that are required for these ancillary uses. What we've seen historically with hotels that have coming, have been coming through and requesting parking reductions through a parking master plan, these reduction, these hotels also include ancillary commercial uses, restaurant meeting facilities, and usually those facilities are also included within the study, and a lot of times, either do not require any additional parking requirement, or are reduced based on that study. So, a lot of times when we're talking about a point eight, or in some cases, less than a point eight, that is based on the parking analysis provided, is supplying parking for those ancillary uses as well.
So, I appreciate that response. The, that seems, that seems like an entirely, I, I guess, let me, I'll just back up a little bit, and I think I've probably come close to the conclusion of my questions for the hotels. The, I, I think it makes so much sense to, I think the 1.25 is excessive, we've seen, we've seen new technologies, we've seen new trends. I understand my fellow commissioners, they, we pretty much all agree, you know, parking study right now is not going to sample, is not going to be a good sample. We, we also all agree that there's, there's a problem, there's, there's an issue, we can, it's, it's obvious. The one, if I can quote Commissioner Urtell, reduction from the 1.2, is that, if that's okay if I quote you, I've, I've been given permission, the one, that makes sense, that's, it just makes sense, and, but it seems like we're also doing stuff to kind of sort of chip away at it, I don't know if maybe that's the right term, but the 5,000 square foot exemption, that doesn't seem like anybody else is doing that, and nobody here is really sure if they are, and that's okay, but it seems like, that seems kind of like something you would do if you're trying to promote development. And we want Scottsdale to be uniquely Scottsdale. We, we want Scottsdale to be Scottsdale. And I don't know how that exemption there, which 5,000 square feet isn't a tiny amount of space, to have zero parking accommodated or provided, and then to, it, it just doesn't seem, that seems like something that you would, you would, you would do when you want to spur development, instead of, we, I think that most people here would say, we want to make sure that Scottsdale gets, you know, Scottsdale quality development. And so, I look at that, and I kind of wonder. I also, I also have questions, and I ask many of my questions about the 20% waiver. I, 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 I mean, there's other things you could ask about that, and we don't need to go into that here. I think, you know, Commissioner Scarborough had, had a great idea as far as maybe moving that to 10%, maybe 5%, something like that, but kind of looking at that, 20%, we talked about 20% for a hotel that requires 200-something rooms, you're going to off the top, and we, 40-something rooms just vanish, or 40-something parking spots just vanish. And then you have, you know, then you have the 5%, the 5,000 square foot exemption, so I think it just raises a lot of questions. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will return it to you. Thank you for allowing me to ask those questions, really appreciate it.
You're welcome, Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Lassio. Commissioner Graham brought up some interesting points, and I think maybe to help the conversation in a dialogue format, just so we're all aware, that the exemption of the 5,000 square feet would be at the 1.0, not the point eight. Anything below 1.0 would require the parking master plan, so even if they had the 4,999 square feet of additional space, to get anything less than 1.0, they would have to do a parking master plan, and have that go through the appropriate approval process. So I can understand the concern. I don't, I, I think there's one level of chipping away we're doing here, or considering, is the 1.25 down to one. Once you get to the 1.0, you go below that, you're going to have to prove yourself, and to me, my, my desire to have employee parking included in that 1.0 is designated, would even account for, if we have a 2,000 square foot restaurant in there, and now they have two cooks, and, and two waitresses and a bartender, that's five more people, what I'm asking for to have done is now five more employee parking spots accounted for, from my recommendation. So, just in the spirit of conversation, I just wanted to discuss that a little bit. That's all I have, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Scarborough. Any other comments, questions, input? Commissioner Young?
Thank you.
Vice Chair Young, sorry. I'm struggling with that, and that's my fault, but I'm going to get to it.
I keep forgetting myself.
Yeah, okay, good. Vice Chair Young.
I just want to reinforce what Commissioner Scarborough just said about the employee parking, because, you know, when, when I drive to my office in the morning, I'm there, you know, 7:00, 7:30, when I'm arriving and leaving, 5:30, 6:00, whenever it might be, and I would say that employee parking, or employees, I'm seeing as the biggest offenders as not parking on hotel properties. I see a lot of people being dropped off, parking in adjacent private property parking lots, and parking on public parking stalls, and they'll come out every two hours, move their car six inches, so the police officer with the white chalk doesn't match up again. So, you know, it's, I think the employee parking is, is very important to consider in this whole thing, not just guest parking. So, with that, I'll yield back.
Do you know why they're moving their cars to their parking on properties? Are they being charged for parking, or is there, are they being told not to park there, or are they just, without any spaces available?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I just see it on a daily basis, and know that it's, it is an issue, at least, at least at certain hotels in the downtown area. I can't speak for all of them, but, you know, from what I see on a daily basis, the employee parking is, it just doesn't seem to be enough. So, and, and again, I don't know if that's across the board, all hotels, but I, I think that there are some in the downtown area that, that do have that, that issue.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Chair Young. Other comments? Commissioner Higgs?
I'm just getting ready for multifamily residential, I've got my finger on the bed.
Just getting prepped? Okay, good. Any other comments on this? I, I kind of feel like I'm going to be a broken record seven times, and, and, and so I'm just going to maybe do it once, and then just kind of say ditto. I, I feel like that we initiated this text amendment in February, Mr. Cluff and staff have worked very hard over a very, a two-month time period to put together as thorough of a report as, as they could have in a very short timeframe, but I kind of feel like, moving back, we still need a parking study. And I'm concerned that we don't have a parking study, a professional parking study, that tells us what the current state of events are, and what our future state of events need to be. And so, I, I, again, go back to the very first bullet point, and that was, council said, hey, we, we want you to do a parking study, and then we want you to review all these other things. And unfortunately, we've reviewed all these other things, but we don't have a parking study to be able to compare them against, and then take some of those recommendations and, and test those against. So, while I think that we're probably going more on, that there probably is some data, but there's some gut decisions that are being made here, and I'm a little bit less comfortable making recommendations on gut, I'd like to make more recommendations on empirical data that we can then compare these recommendations to, whether they be local cities of comparable activity, national cities of comparable activity, recommendations on actual models, parking study models that have been used over and over again. That's my biggest concern, is that we don't have a parking study that we're basing our recommendations on. I feel like we're doing a little bit of research, but we're doing a lot more gut feelings, is where I'm coming from. That's just my input. Any other comments? Commissioner Urtell?
Thank you, sir. At our last meeting, I believe it was our last meeting, or previous meeting, I had said, well, we might be able to, you know, recommend this, and then come back in a year or two and revisit, and I thought about that later, that might have been a tad naive on my part. I mean, after we've passed this, you know, we, the city has passed this, and staff has said, well, that's done, you know, there's not going to be a lot of motivation or incentive to come back and look at it again. So if, you know, we later found that, gee, the gut reactions, the gut, the gut decisions that we made weren't borne out, we might be stuck. So, yeah, I'm inclined to say, no, don't plan to just look at it again, and, or, I should say, don't hope to look at it again in one or two years.
Thank you, Commissioner Urtell. One clarification I want to make is that I do believe that we do have a parking situation. I'm, I'm not naive to think that we don't have, that the topic of parking is, is not necessary, I believe that it is, and I believe this is a very important topic that we, as the commission, need to make recommendations to the city council, it's our obligation, and then city council will take those recommendations to heart when they dialogue, and then make some decisions as well. So, I think this is a very important, very relevant, pertinent conversation that we're having. Obviously, we have not only citizens, but we also have business owners that are impacted by the decisions we're making. So I'd, I'd like to get it right, I'd like, as opposed to just doing something, I'd like to do something right, and, and I'd like to make a recommendation to council on something that we really feel strongly about. Any other comments, questions?
Commissioner Graham? Mr. Chairman, I don't suppose I could ask a question?
I, I do believe you could ask a question.
Very good.
For sure.
It sounds, I'm kind of get a feeling like we're, we're debating, it, it seems like, I'm kind of getting the sense that there seems like there's, there's not widespread approval, approbation about the way the text is currently written.
Consensus?
Yes. Yeah, I don't, I'm not feeling the, the consensus, the approbation of the consensus, but, so I guess my question, if, Mr. Padilla, if I could ask you a question, continuing, so we're kind of, maybe, we talked about, you know, hypothetically breaking this into seven parts, and I don't, what would it look like if, if there was a motion made to continue it? Would it still go to council? Could you break it into seven parts, continue some and not others? Could I, does that question make sense?
Chair Vice Chair, members of the commission, if you did a motion to continue, it won't go to council, it's going to be continued for you to then hear it again.
Can, can council still extract it? Can they, with, can they extract it and still review it?
There, there is a mechanism in the code for that, but it wouldn't be just because you continued at one time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to ask that.
Absolutely. Commissioner Graham, one of the things I know that we could do is that, whether, if we did make a motion, whether it be a motion of no action, or a motion of denial, with a recommendation of the need for a parking study, and then a recommendation that after the parking study was conducted, and the full text amendment was reevaluated, we could make a recommendation that it would, would come back to planning commission. Whether council decided that was an appropriate recommendation or not, I don't know, but that way, we could still move all of the items to city council, so that they could then review all of those items.
So, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Would we have to, so it sounds like you're saying we would make a motion, and then we would sort of, not conditionalize it, but add, almost like a postscript or something, or ta, you know, attach sort of like a message, but we may not even agree on that message. I'm for one, I, I'm, I'm as sympathetic for obtaining data and finding the right solution as anybody. We just heard Mr. Grant say, or I heard him say, that it's, it's not a science, it is an art, and I think there's some wisdom to that, and so, it's, it makes me wonder, if we can clearly see something, you know, with absolute clarity that there is an issue, then we, we do at least accept the fact that making no decision is a decision. So with that, I would say, maybe we can't agree on, you know, the postscripts to whatever motion ends up being made, but, and that would, that would, I would defer that to, to your leadership, and how we move forward.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Urtell, I think you did have your hand up, and then maybe Commissioner Scarborough did as well.
I did. Clarification on what Commissioner Graham had asked, I thought he was asking, and maybe not, is it possible to have a continuance on item number one, and a recommendation to council to approve on number two, and on number three, a recommendation to deny? Can you split it up that way? Was that what you were asking, or is that just me?
Yeah, I was, I was asking, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I was just simply asking if, because we have kind of seven sections, or six sections, depending what you look at, I think it's six now, if we continued some and made a motion to move forward, but I think, it seems that we want it to move forward to the city council, so continuing it would sort of park this parking debate here, which is, I don't think anybody wants. If I can speak for the group, that may not be correct.
Okay, then that, that wasn't his question, but it is mine. Can you continue one item, recommend against another?
So, the way you're agendized, I think you could break that recommendation up, but it, and it would go to council on certain items with a recommendation one way or the other. I think you could then make a motion to continue the items that you either need more information on, or you could make a motion to deny those items, and send the whole thing up with your recommendations on the ones that you think are appropriate. So So you could make a combination of, of decisions here and send it up to city council.
Thank you.
And that would help you with that motion if we, if it comes down to that.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Commissioner Scarborough?
Chair, let's see if I may be so bold to make the first motion.
Let's see.
See if we can get off the stalemate of this question. All right. For item number one, I would move to make a recommendation of approval with the following stipulations or conditions. One, that a traffic study, an updated traffic study be completed. Two, that employee parking is considered as part of the 1.0 requirement, that a max employee demand is considered, and designated parking spots for employees is identified for each project. And then two, or a third, sorry, a third stipulation would be that up to a 10% deduction can be administratively approved. Anything above 10% would go to the appropriate board or council for approval. I believe that adds another layer of transparency to the public.
Okay.
So that would be my recommendation.
Very good. Mr. Curtis, did you get the, that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that was fairly simple. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So we do have a, and I wanted to ask for a point of clarification, but maybe I should do that after it's seconded. But we have a motion, we'll ask for a second, and then I'll ask for a point of clarification.
I'll second, based on those three stipulations.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion by Commissioner Scarborough, we have a second by Commissioner Higgs, and now I need to remember what my point of clarification was. Restate the very first portion of your motion, because that's where I got.
A stipulation that it, again, traffic study.
Sure. So are, part of your-
Parking study.
Parking study.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Thank you, sir.
So part of the parking study, are you, the recommendation of the parking study, would you want to see the, would you want the parking study to be complete and presented to council before they were able to implement the hotel portion of the text amendment?
Thank you for the clarification on that.
And I have a question about that, too.
I'll strike the first stipulation, because that would not be feasible to complete a parking study within that timeframe. So I'll strike the first stipulation. Am I second?
Yes, I'll second that. If the, if it does need to be completed before that, before that time, and that can take a while to do, so I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Mr. Curtis, did you, you gathered that?
Mr. Chairman, certainly can strike that. Commissioner Scarborough, another approach might be, and that would play into your second and third motions, would include that a analysis for hotels would have to include a parking analysis at the time of submittal, because that would play into the suggestion that they have a detailed accounting for their employees, and then it would also play into the 10% reduction. As opposed to it being ahead of the text amendment, it could be at the time of a development application for a hotel, a parking study needs to be submitted. It'd be a submittal requirement.
Commissioner Scarborough, is that something that you might want to consider in your motion?
I would, and I'd like to add that in. Thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Curtis.
So then we'll move to your second, see if your second's still seconding after the many modifications of the motion.
This is my third second. Yes, I would second that.
Your third second? Mr. Padilla, see your hand on the, on the microphone.
I just, Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the commission, I just want to clarify, as these motions have been made and then modified and made and modified, and seconds have been, have been approved, none of those motions have been withdrawn, and we're going to eventually vote on one. But which, which one are we voting on in terms of what the request is? So the request really is to lower the hotel base room requirement from 1.25 to 1.0. Is there going to be a recommendation on that?
I believe that the recommendation was to accept that.
Correct. The recommendation is to accept-
Accept that.
-what is presented by staff with the following modifications.
And then, there was an inclusion of a, a 5,000-square-foot exception. Is that part of the?
So that would be a yes?
Yes, sir.
That is, okay. And then it says, add a performance requirement for parking master plans that are requesting a reduction for travel accommodation uses?
I think it was a, it was a recommendation to reduce the requirement from 20% to 10%, correct?
Okay.
So, yeah, the 10% would be administratively approved. Anything above 10% would require the appropriate board or council for approval.
And then the final portion of that?
Which is what I have a question on.
Very good. The final portion of that motion was to require a parking analysis at time of submittal, correct? For, okay, very good. And so, Commissioner Graham, real quick, so we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Padilla, did we answer your questions?
You did.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Chair Lassio.
Sorry, I wanted to make sure we went through the-
No, and I want to be, make sure I understand the motion. It's not easy. Commissioner Scarborough, you made a comment about employee parking, we're lowering it from 1.25 to 1. What was your comment about the, the inclusion or exclusion of employee parking? Was that part of your motion?
It is meant to be that, that the employee parking is accounted for when the reduc, when we're making the reduction from 1.25 to 1.0. Now, however, we're convoluted this text amendment-
I know.
-to the nth degree. Ultimately, now what we're suggesting is part of this approval or recommendation is that a parking study be completed upon submittal. That parking study will review employee parking and ensure that max demand of employee parking is accounted for and dedicated within the private parking provided by that project.
What, do you think that would have the effect of increasing the parking requirement or decreasing it?
No, the intent is for that to be encapsulated in the 1.0. And again, if they want to go further south than the 1.0, they would have to do a ma, a parking master plan and prove that it makes sense to staff and potentially the board or council for any reduction from that 1.0.
Okay. And my last question about it was that you said in your motion to require a parking study for each project? Is that right?
Parking analysis, I believe is what we're, the term we were using.
I guess the question I have is, Vice Chair Young and Chair Lassio, I think we're talking, talking about a parking study for the whole city on public parking. Is that right?
I, I can't speak for Vice Chair Young, but I can speak for myself in that I was more interested in a parking study, not only for public parking, but a public, but a parking study that would make recommendations for, I would say, downtown requirements for multifamily, really every single one of the seven elements that we have.
Okay.
I'm, I'm more in favor of a larger parking study as opposed to individual parking.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, because these, you know, these things get convoluted, and I want to make sure everything's very clear.
Very good. Any, Commissioner Urtell?
Well, I'm, I think I'm still confused. Not hard to do. So the parking study is, we are saying that we recommend number one for the council, but not until there is a parking study completed or regardless, we simply recommend that a parking study be done at some time.
If I may try to help clarify, the parking analysis that Commissioner Scarborough is referencing in his motion would be specific to the project, not a general overall parking study for the downtown Scottsdale area. Is that a correct statement?
Correct.
Commissioner Scarborough? Okay.
And the parking study is not anticipated by this motion at all.
So the only parking analysis that he's looking for is project-specific?
Project-specific.
Part of this mo, as I understand this motion, the parking study for the overall area is not contemplated in Commissioner Scarborough's motion. Is that a correct statement? Commissioner Scarborough? Correct. Commissioner Graham, I saw your hand.
Oh, yes. Commissioner Urtell, was that all your questions? I didn't mean to cut. Okay. Chair Lassio, the, are we adding a new parking require, parking study, a requirement for every hotel now?
Parking analysis, yes.
We're adding an entire, entirely new requirement for each project?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. Is there, Mr. Curtis, is there any such requirement in the, in the code as it is?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Graham, so there's the parking master plans when developers are looking for a reduction. There's also another analysis if they're doing a shared use to mixed project, and they could submit that. The code has, you know, definitive numbers, but there are provisions in the code to, for developers and applicants to pursue reductions based off of different scenarios, like a mixed-use project, or they want a reduction because our numbers may be antiquated or our land use list may be antiquated, that matches up with the parking, there may be hybrid uses, and so we have to figure out, well, what do we do about parking with these hybrid uses? So there's some already built-in structure in the code to allow the zoning administrator to assist with the, I guess, the nuances of different projects that come in, different land uses that come in, some are so new, we've never heard of, we don't have a good standard for it, but we put something that is analogous to try to achieve. So there are some things built in there. As we've seen with hotels, oftentimes they're doing a study just to get a reduction from that 1.25. So is this new? This would be new, that'd be standard for those who aren't even looking for a reduction, but they're all doing a parking analysis anyway, for their own sake as well, from the market standpoint, and then oftentimes to try to get a reduction. So I, I don't think it, it's overly burdensome. I think it's a matter of, or price of doing business for their own market needs. If that helps you, thank you.
Yeah, that, that helps. It seems like it's almost sort of an exogenous item that was, you know, introduced into the debate. And so I was kind of, wanted to clarify the distinction between, you know, parking, public parking, widespread study versus the requirement of actually attachment of a parking analysis on these projects. So, is this the time, Mr. Chairman, for comment before we vote on this motion?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my commentary would be that I think Commissioner Scarborough, there were really strong things about the motion. The, and I really like the direction of a lot of it. I have questions about the 5,000-square-foot exemption. I just still think that's kind of something you do if you want to spur development, and maybe less of what we want to do to, to invite Scottsdale quality development. So I also, I think Commissioner Scarborough is going in a great direction with the 10%, and so I really appreciate that. So I'll just make those remarks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other commissioners want to speak to Commissioner Scarborough's motion? Commissioner, Vice Chair Young?
I guess I just have also a point of clarification that Mr. Curtis had brought up, that, you know, typically when an applicant does come in, you know, on their architectural site plan, they'll have parking required, parking provided, and then there'll be some sort of a debate in order to get either a parking reduction, or maybe the city comes back and, I don't know if they'll ever come back and say, you've got to have more than what's required. So I think, I don't know if that's necessarily, like he had said, an additional requirement. I think it's already a process that's built into the application on most any project with the city. And then to clarify Commissioner Graham's question about what my position was on the parking study, was more of a holistic-
Yes.
-study, as Chair Lassio had indicated. So I, I think a holistic study of the, the parking in, in whole is, is tantamount to everything. I think that's vitally important, a missing component to what we're talking about here today.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Very good. Any other commissioners want to speak? Commissioner Urtell?
Yeah, when we began talking about, you know, how to move ahead, you know, we had three options. One was to recommend in favor, one was to recommend denial, and one was continuance. And I thought, well, I like the continuance, because we should be getting more information. Then, as I understand it, from Mr. Padilla, if it's continued, then council either doesn't have a shot at it, or they have to jump through hoops, I didn't quite follow that, to get to it. But, so anyway, the continuance idea doesn't sound so good. There are so many issues with this, and it, a lot of it comes back to, is 1.0 a good number? Is 1.25 the best number to keep? Should we exempt the first 5,000? Should we exempt the first 3,000? How about 10,000? We just don't know. And I understand now that this motion is not talking about a, a parking study that covers the whole, the, the holistic study that the vice chair, not to be confused with Commissioner, as some do, you know, has said, it's holistic. Well, yes, this parking is a holistic problem, and to say, well, let's go at it piecemeal, let's go at it piecemeal with what feels good to me, as opposed to what knowledge I have. And again, parenthetically, I understand it's an art, not a science, but, you know, art is not, is not just feel-good. You know, art has structure, art has form, art has texture, has, art has color, and it has to fit. And I, so, yes, it's an art, but we don't have enough here to make a picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Urtell. Any others that would like to speak to Commissioner Scarborough's motion? Doesn't look so, so I'll, I'll just make one last statement. I also feel probably similar to Commissioner Urtell and Commissioner Young, that while I think that Commissioner Scarborough did a very good job of thinking through and communicating probably a pretty appropriate motion in most cases, my concern is, is that we don't have a holistic parking study for our downtown Scottsdale area. And without having that holistic parking study, I'm having a tough time, personally having a tough time looking at each individual of the seven elements and feeling like I'm making a, an appropriate recommendation on each individual one, because without each individual, without a holistic look at it, each individual one isn't really making sense for me yet. So that's, that's my comment. Without any other comments, then we have a motion, we have a second. We will ask for the liaison to take a roll call vote.
Chair Lassio?
No.
Vice Chair Young?
No.
Commissioner Higgs?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
No.
And Commissioner Urtell?
No.
Motion does not pass.
Very good. Motion does not pass four to two. Again, very well thought-out motion, and I think it's appropriate. Just having a bigger picture view is where we are right now. So, that being said, we've not done a very good job of pulling it apart and moving forward past number one. It took us a little over an hour, so if we do seven of these, we'll be out of here about 1:00 AM. It took us two hours. That moves us a little further past 1:00 AM then. Commissioner Young? Vice Chair Young?
Thank you. In the effort to move this along, I might ask permission for an alternate motion, if I may.
Sure.
If I could jump in, you don't need to make an alternate motion, that one was defeated. You can just make a regular motion?
Oh, okay. It's not an alternate, it's just a motion. Fair enough.
Then Chair Lassio, I'd like to make a motion for us to recommend to city council to initiate a parking analysis prior to us considering the text amendment at a soon, or a to-be-determined date.
Thank you, Vice Chair Young. Based on the case that we have in front of us, is that an appropriate motion, Mr. Curtis or Mr. Padilla?
If, if you could give me like a minute to confer with Mr. Curtis, I do have a question on that exact, exact issue, if I could just have-
Absolutely, absolutely. Can we take a break?
The refs are huddling up. The refs are huddling up.[570.04]
Not comfortable with the staff recommendation and recommending that be denied. And I think it's really important to remember that this was all brought up through a citizen petition. And so there is a faction in the community that really wants things moving forward to a council decision. So if the planning commission is clear that they're not comfortable with, say, item number one as presented by staff and doesn't have a good alternative without a parking study, then it would just simply deny item number one or item any changes to the hotel parking requirements until there's a parking study. And the sentiment may be the same on the other six or seven items.
Or we could do, we could do it on all, one at a time on all seven, or could we do one blanket one? I'm not recommending that we would do that, but I guess theoretically you could do one blanket one for the entire case.
That's correct. It could be a denial on the entire case because there's just not enough data to make the decision in spring of 2021, right? That's pretty much what we're saying.
Okay. Let's see. We do have a, we're in the middle of a motion, and then we'll speak to that motion, but we're in the middle of a motion, so I want to at least give you the opportunity to either refine your motion, remove your motion, or what are your thoughts, Vice Chair Young?
I guess my question is, council requested a parking analysis to be completed.
Parking study.
Our parking study to be completed. That was not done. However, a text amendment was initiated. Is there any, is it because of what happened with COVID that that parking study was never completed? Or it seems like there was a request to do something, it wasn't done, the text amendment was made, and now we're considering the changes based on information that we don't have?
Is that a question? Is that a question for Mr. Curtis?
Yeah, I guess it is. And I'm just trying to understand that.
Sounds like it might be a question for Mr. Curtis on process.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Vice Chairman, I'm not sure if Randy Grant is raising his hand or not, but yes, there was a desire for a parking study by council. COVID obviously makes it really difficult, and trends are changing even during COVID, so there's a lot of unknowns, and that's where we're at right now. But at the same token, there's concerns about new development complying with antiquated standards, and therefore, the faction in the community really wants a conversation in front of council. They may have the same sentiment about the study, we don't know. I think they're looking for the planning commission and the public comment at first, before it gets to them, to see what the other experts in the community are thinking. But yeah, those were the challenges with the parking study, and we're probably months away from being in a position where we would get a fair parking analysis. And so, but not all of the items may need a parking analysis. And so I think it's healthy that we have the conversation, even if we end up saying we're not ready. But then again, on some of these items, we might be ready. So I think all of this is healthy, and it puts everybody out there and gets the conversation going, and definitely gets our new city council to be able to deliberate among themselves after hearing what everybody in the community has said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. I appreciate that. Vice Chair Young.
Okay, so with that, in my opening remarks tonight, I had said that, you know, my comments about the parking analysis or parking study was specific to the first, I think it was, my computer's not connecting to the internet right now to have the list right now, but it was the first, I think, five or six items. The last one that was on there, the special improvement requirements, I think, in my opinion, those accommodations probably wouldn't need the benefit of a parking analysis. I think that's in itself kind of a benefit and a incentive to a developer to want to try to provide additional parking. So I guess what I would like to suggest is to, I guess, would I be amending my motion?
We never actually seconded the motion, I don't believe, so you're
So I can change it?
You're still in the process of formulating your motion.
You started a motion, I interrupted you, I think. I apologize for that. And you never really got it out there, so you can rephrase your motion, start it, start all over again.
And Mr. Chairman and Vice Chairman, I'm sorry, Vice Chairman, but I know Randy wanted, I think his hand is raised, I think he may be able to answer your question as well, so that might be beneficial before you do your motion. Thank you.
Mr. Grant, so Mr. Grant is on the line again. Wow. Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It may help to think about it as a parking study generally and traditionally is looking at parking supply in an area. In the past, it's been by quadrant in downtown, and the focus has been, is there enough parking overall, and is it in the right place? A parking analysis is more typical of a particular project, like a submittal for a hotel would submit a parking analysis for that use to determine if it's being parked appropriately on that property. And so, you know, I just suggest that maybe there's, maybe there's a different way of thinking about it. I don't think it's, it's going to be feasible to do a parking study in downtown until well after COVID has had its impact and we see what that is. Requiring parking analysis to take place for particular projects is something that we can do and is typically something that we do when a reduction is being considered. So what's before you tonight is on a project-specific basis and not on an overall parking supply in the downtown. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Just a point of clarification, if we did a parking study, they would not make recommendations on multifamily per-unit space parking? There would not, that would not be part of a parking study?
Mr. Chairman, it could be, depending on what the consultant was contracted to do. Typically, it would be more, more general to determine supply and location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Okay, so that also helped us gather additional information. Vice Chair Young, you still had the floor, and I don't know if that helps, provides you more information as far as either formulating a motion or maybe delaying a motion, I'm not sure.
I'm still thinking here.
Can I add another question or comment?
Sure. As long as Vice Chair Young yields the floor.
It's hard.
Absolutely. Commissioner Higgs?
So I have a question and a comment. So along the lines of studies and back to your point, Chair Alessio, when you're asking about the multifamily residential, I think, you know, it would be important if we were to say, yes, we would like to have a parking study, that we make note of these specific, you know, issues that need to be looked at, such as multifamily, oh, some trends that may impact multifamily parking, things like cost of homes are going up. I know adults, working adults that are sharing a condo, they need two parking spots for two bedrooms. Business development, especially with the trend in technology in the heart of Scottsdale, is bringing in some younger people. I know recent college graduates, they too are sharing in multifamily space, locations and need additional parking. And then with remote working, more cars are going to be at those residential locations. So I think those are some things that we need to think about. So I think we just need to make sure that those specific areas that are, the six or seven topics, or six A and B, whatever, however you broke that up, Chair Alessio, are covered if we, if that, if we do move forward with a request for a parking study. And then my question is, maybe, I must have missed something in the timeline, so forgive me here. Speaker, Mr. French Thompson, mentioned the petition that was signed by numerous citizens back in October, November of 2019, had different stipulations or requirements listed, such as the one and a half parking spot for one bedroom, two for two bedroom, one for each additional, and again, this is, this is multifamily residential. That was in November 2019. That was the petition, you know, then. I'm curious how we got to here, because I know there was a virtual open house this year, May 30th and April 1st, so I, and that there's a lot of feedback. Excuse me, I also missed another, there were a few different things that were, that were different, listed in that initial petition. So I'm curious what happened to change that and what the feedback was in the virtual open house and those dates to get to where we are with how things are laid out in the presentation today. And I probably should have asked this early on, I was trying to be patient.
That's probably a question for Mr. Clough. Mr. Clough, I'm not sure if you heard the questions from Commissioner Higgs?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Chair Alessio and Commissioner Higgs. So the petition that you, you're speaking of was received right around the same time as the city council's work study session in February of 2020. So, so we did get a copy of that, and we have the information that was associated with it. That was, the information that was provided on it did have specific recommendations as to what suggested parking requirements should be for multifamily residential, including guest parking, and then some specifics about hotels as well. The petition is included as in attachment five to the packet. So, so a lot of the modifications that are included in this text amendment were geared towards addressing the concerns that were presented with that petition. However, in evaluating the specific demands that were recommended, parking demands, that is, that were recommended with the petitions, it really resulted in some substantial increases to parking requirements, particularly multifamily residential, that staff didn't feel comfortable making such a substantial change to the code without having that additional information that would be available through a study. So that's how we kind of got to the recommendation of what we have, have before you today, which is not as substantial of a change as was proposed with the petition.
Okay, I think I understand, except the very last part there, where you said, staff didn't feel comfortable in making a recommendation without a study, but then there's a recommendation based without a study with that, with the change. So I guess that's where I lost you a little bit at the end there.
Yeah, I, if I can clarify, you know, the recommendation that we have before the commission with this item, specific to multifamily residential, I think is rather conservative because we're simply applying a ratio that's already been applied within the city and been tested, which is that outside of Old Town ratio. And then adding in a guest parking requirement that can be somewhat backed up by benchmarking data that we conducted with other, other cities. So kind of where we started to hesitate was to make changes to those existing ratios that are outside of the downtown, applicable citywide beyond what we already have experience with.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and one of those examples would be that the, the guest parking use was, at least in the initial petition, one onsite for every four units, and now it's indicated one for every eight. So I guess, you know, this study, this inevitable study that's going to happen may change all this anyhow. Okay, I was just, I felt like I was missing some part in that timeline, how we got to here when the initial petition started out different, that was signed for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgs. Mr. Clough, you brought up something that made me ask myself a question. I see that you broke out multifamily with, outside the Old Town Downtown area, and then you broke out multifamily within the Old Town Downtown area, but we did not break out hotels outside the Old Town Downtown area and within the Old Town Downtown area. Was there a rationale why we did not break out hotels, but we did break out multifamily?
Chair Alessio and members of the commission, the main reason is that's how the ordinance is already formatted. There's already a separate requirement for Old Town and outside of Old Town for multifamily residential, and the existing requirement for hotels is applicable to both, both situations inside Old Town and outside of Old Town.
Okay, great. So it wasn't like we had a strong opinion on the two, it was, we just kind of stuck with kind of where we are today, with, maybe without that study that we've kind of been talking about. Is that a fair statement, or is that not a fair statement?
Chair Alessio, I do believe that's a fair statement. However, also recognizing that there is a bit more flexibility with regard to the hotels in that they have been using the parking master plan to make specific reductions based on where they're located in the city. So our thought was that having that available for the hotels could specifically tailor those Old Town developments to what their parking needs are.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. I think we may have lost a little bit of our momentum here. Commissioner Scarborough.
Point of order, aren't we in the middle of a motion with Commissioner, or Vice Chair Young?
Well, I don't know. Vice Chair Young, are we in the middle of a motion? You needed a moment, and you yielded the
Well, yeah, I kind of started, and you know, I think that the issue at hand here is we're being tasked with making a decision on the request of council to initiate a parking study that was not completed, which now we've got a text amendment before us that, you know, we had, I believe it was seven speakers that spoke very passionately about the parking problems that they've experienced in Old Town, that there is, there is an issue here, and it's an important issue. And as Commissioner Otte said earlier, and I might paraphrase, not quote you, because I don't remember exactly what you said, that we are, we don't really want to do something that feels right, we want to do something that is right. And, you know, I think that right now, we're kind of in a perfect storm of uncertainty because, you know, when things were decided, and we've been experiencing these parking problems for quite some time. And it's difficult for me, and I guess, really, I've got more questions now than I have answers when we, when we started this meeting. And, and I'm trying to think through my mind of how to formulate this motion, but I'm not even really sure how to do it now, because I don't, I don't think we've got the, the tools here to make a recommendation to council. I know that they're expecting one from us. I know that, you know, but I just don't think that, but I think we kind of just went around in a big circle here, and we didn't hit all the milestones before we got back.
Yep.
And I think that it's premature for us to do this. However, I do want to reiterate that parking is a big issue. It needs to be solved. It's important. And, you know, we had these, these seven speakers that took time out of their day to get on the phone and be with us tonight to tell us about their, their concerns. And I think we can testify right now, too, that since we've been talking about this for a number of hours, that we're all concerned about it, too. We want to make sure we get it right.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm a little hesitant to just make a knee-jerk reaction. So I guess I'm, I'm almost trying to figure out how we could possibly make a motion here to keep this moving along, because to do a parking study right now is not going to give us great numbers. At least, I don't think so. Maybe. I'm hoping that things are going to get better, and the city is hustling and bustling again, and we're going to have, you know, this parking problem, and we've got to solve it, and we're going to figure it out. So I guess, I guess, saying all that, I want to maybe couch my, my motion for now and maybe see if any other commissioners has an alternate, not alternate, a different motion that they'd like to present, and maybe that would kind of help at least a discussion on how we go about this.
I think there's wisdom in what you're saying. I'd like to make a recommendation, that maybe we go commissioner by commissioner, and I know that Commissioner Scarborough, I want to call on him first because he is ready to say something, but we might want to go one by one and have more of a bigger picture discussion about, do we feel that we have enough information without a parking study to be able to appropriately make recommendations on each one of these individual items? If not, that may tell us something. So Commissioner Scarborough, please.
Thank you, Chair Alessio. I think you're on the same path that I'm on, is that it sounds there's, there's a consensus of the commission at this point that we don't have enough information, so the, to me, the obvious recommendation is denial. Now, the denial will come with our thoughts, and I think now if we embrace or consider the idea that it's a recommendation for denial at this point, now we coat that denial with our comments and have staff take those comments to city council. They can digest all of those comments and make the appropriate decision.
Very good.
So that would be my thought process.
Thank you for your input. Commissioner Otte?
Yes, I would agree that we don't have consensus, or we have a consensus that we don't have enough information. I have an additional concern that came up when Director Grant had mentioned that, well, a parking study, if I recall correctly, a parking study breaks the city into quadrants, and it looks to see if there's enough parking in each quadrant, and if there's, if that parking is in the right place. And somebody, I think Commissioner Higgs may have said something, she said, and he, his response was, well, it depends on what the consultant is asked to look at. So with that in mind, I would want to include in whatever we come up with, with a request that we get to look at the work scope prior to the consultant beginning any, any parking study, so that we could see that, is it going to answer the questions that we have?
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Otte. Commissioner Graham?
One thing that I think, thank you, Chair Alessio, one thought that I'm having, and I'm trying to step back, is I don't know how much value a public parking study is going to provide us. We spend a lot of time talking about incomplete information. The public parking study is about, it's going to look and see public parking spots for places that accommodate the public, restaurants, shops, things of that nature. So if we're so concerned about hotels, because that's where, I know we kind of talked a little bit tangentially about multifamily, but we're talking about hotels right now. The, a parking study, to me, is just going to tell us, we have too many spots, we can lower the requirements for the hotels because they can use the public spots. That just doesn't really make sense to me. You know, I know there is, so the counterargument to that is, well, no, it's denser, people are going to use Uber there, they're going to require less parking. But I think we, I think we all agree that we don't want to change public parking requirements based on the public parking spots that the employees and the people that are there can just go ahead and use. I don't know how helpful a parking study is going to be on hotels. What I do think is that we don't agree on, there's not consensus on the amendment to the text. So maybe it's something we do consider, we make a motion to decline the amendment as it is and send it over to the city council, so it's not parked here forever. So those are some thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Because we don't have enough parking.
Right. Thank you for picking up on the analogy.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Vice Chair Young, and then we'll go to Commissioner Higgs.
Sure. I, I have a question for Mr. Padilla. So just so I'm clear, if we deny or make a recommendation for denial tonight, and it, that unanimously gets voted on, approved, that we carry that motion, council could still see this case? They could request that they still see it?
Your recommendation for denial would move this case up to city council. They would then review it, take all your comments, and then take some sort of form of action that they feel is appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, whether we recommend to accept or deny, they then take that under consideration, and they would see it. Commissioner Higgs?
Um, I don't know. No, I'm on par, I think, with what everyone else was saying, that I don't feel that we have enough information to approve at this point.
Very good. And then my final comment is, Commissioner Graham, I think that part of the public parking study would actually be expanded, and we would ask the, my recommendation would be to ask the parking consultant to make recommendations for hotels and consider hotels in more rural, I shouldn't say rural, outside of the downtown area, within the downtown area, then also take a look at our multifamily in those two areas, as well as office, and even take a look at our in-lug parking. I would actually expand the request for a parking study, not just to be a public parking study, because, and they may say, you've got a great number of parking spaces, nine thousand is too much, they may say it's too little, who knows? But we also want to expand that to the private developments as well, to get some recommendations on that. I would feel more comfortable expanding that, and so that would be part of my thoughts as it relates to sending that back to council. It sounds like that we might have a consensus that we don't have enough information, based on what I'm hearing. So with that, there's a couple ways that we can go. We can continue to discuss each one of the individual items, or if we have a consensus that we don't have enough information to discuss the rest of these items, there could be a motion of, to city council for a recommendation on this. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on doing a motion. Commissioner Scarborough?
Not a motion, but I would suggest that part of our, our role is to advise the council, and I think for us to make a motion and call it a day at this point would be a disservice to the council. So whether we have a consensus or not for rejecting this text amendment as it stands, I believe it's our due diligence or our responsibility to provide council our feedback. So I've got a number of items that I'd like to discuss on each topic, I'm sure everybody else does, and I think council deserves that feedback so they can make a sound decision.
Perfect. I concur with that. Anybody else have any thoughts on that at all?
No. I suppose I would make a motion, I would attempt to make a motion, if you would so allow that, Mr. Chair.
We can't. I think, I think Commissioner Scarborough was actually saying that we wanted to delay a motion, discuss the individual topic, maybe I misheard you, you wanted to discuss the individual topics and then make the motion. Is that a correct statement?
He wanted to attach requests, I thought, to the motion.
No, however we want to do it, I think we can achieve it in either way. You can make a motion and discuss the motion.
Yep.
Or you can discuss it and then make a motion. I don't care
Okay.
how we do it logistically, just that
You wanted there to be a discussion.
We provide feedback with our denial. We, if that's the way this is going, then just giving the denial and saying, we're done.
Gotcha. Understood. Commissioner Graham, did you want to initiate a motion based on the clarification?
Yeah, I suppose.
I could just jump in. If you make a motion, the debate that needs to be on the motion. If you're, if you're wanting to have a discussion on all of these items, then you should have a discussion on all of the items, and then you can make your motion. But if you, you can also make it now, but then your discussion will be on the motion.
Only on the motion, but not on
Well, because you'll have a motion pending, and you won't have to
So if we were to start talking about specific items, you might jump in and say
Well, I would say, I wouldn't say too much, but I would probably say, well, okay, what are you going to do with that motion? You're talking about everything else, and you haven't addressed the motion yet.
Gotcha. Understood.
In that, in that case, Mr. Chair, if I may, probably do the discussion first.
Okay, very good. Then let's kind of go in order here. Is there any additional discussion we would like to have on hotels? Seeing as none, we'll move to multifamily residential outside of the downtown area, and we could even include multifamily within the downtown area and just talk about multifamily overall. Does anybody have any comments or questions, want to make some?
Many.
Many? Okay. Commissioner Graham?
Oh, let me, let me collect my notes here real quick, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Pardon me, and I'll be ready in just a moment.
Okay, very good. Anyone, Commissioner Otte?
Well, I would just make a few, there are more comments than anything else. The guest parking spaces, one per eight units, it doesn't seem, doesn't feel like it's enough. Why go against the average, you know, the, across the valley, why go against that? There may be a good reason, but I've not heard it. The 1.25 per studio, 1.3 per one bed. I appreciate hearing something about the mix of, of units, but still, and I appreciate that what you're proposing goes above the, whether it was industry or government statistics, I don't know, but still, I come down to, who knows? Who knows? We need to have a study of how this actually has been working. So that's what I have on multifamily.
Thank you, Commissioner Otte. Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Alessio. I guess first off, I'd like to say that we did receive the photos from Mrs. Kurtley, so we've all reviewed those photos, so want to thank her for providing them. With multifamily, my thoughts are that With multifamily, my thoughts are that the increase to the studio in one bedroom makes sense to me. I'm struggling with the decrease of, of the two bedrooms. For, for me, I know rents in Scottsdale are increasing. I believe it's, in my opinion, that that will require multiple income earners to pay rent. And I would take another step forward and say that if you're an income earner, the likelihood of you having a car is high. And I think that's applicable to one bedroom and two bedroom units. I know, I don't believe three bedroom units are as developed as one and two bedrooms, so I'm not as concerned as a reduction on the three bedroom. But I do struggle with the two bedroom being reduced. I also struggle with the fact that we're looking at multifamily in the downtown area and saying it's apples to apples with multifamily outside the downtown area. That just doesn't ring true. And again, to your point, this study, Commissioner Otte's point of the study is always beneficial, but doing a one size fits all for multifamily, I struggle with. With that also in the downtown area, I, you know, we keep saying it's more urban, but I can tell you, one of the considerations I look at is what do we have for grocery down there? So we don't have the facilities to incentivize removing a car from the situation at this point. I, I want to say you have a Sprouts at Calumback and Miller and the next closest true grocery store would be an Albertson's at Thomas in Scottsdale. I, I don't know many people who are eating out every night or having their food delivered to them on a constant basis. So I'm, I'm not understanding the reduction of needing a car and thus parking for those spaces. So at this point, I'm liking very much that A and B are going up, or the studio in one bedrooms and that C, the two bedrooms, I struggle with it dropping to 1.7. Guest parking, I, these photos from Mrs. Kurtley are, are very evidential that guest parking is an issue. I don't know what the right ratio is. Again, to other commissioners saying that we need a study, I, I would agree with that. That this, the study that's forthcoming or will be done in the future should contemplate this as part of its scope of what is an appropriate ratio. Could it be one to four, one to six, one to eight? I don't know. But I do know that guest parking is a problem and there needs to be a consideration here. And even though we're doing a, a recommendation for potentially, I apologize, for denial this evening, I would also say that I believe it's well within planning commissions and city councils purview to require, require guest parking in addition to code and maybe I'd like to have clarification from staff, but I believe it's well within purview to make those requests of individual developers on an ad hoc basis. So with that said, those are my main comments for multifamily and I'll yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Graham?
Well, very good. Thank you, Chair Lassio. I suppose we're going clockwise here. And I do want to thank Sonny Kirkley for the submission of this, of this photo. Commissioner Scarborough discussed it. This is, I can't remember the name of the unit. I think that name has changed a couple of times or so, but it's at the northeast corner of Granite Reef and Indian School. It's just, it, this just isn't Scottsdale. It's just not Scottsdale, I don't think. And what has happened here is I don't even know what the contents of, or what the requirements of guest parking in this unit are, but you can't even get to it. And I appreciate when Randy Grant was on the phone, he said that they, that city staff believes that public or guest parking for these types of multifamily units should be accessible. There should not be a barrier between the guest and the parking spot. So I really hope it moves forward in that direction. Few other comments I'd like to make. I, a couple of things that Commissioner Scarborough said that I totally agree with. It doesn't make sense to lower the two-person bedrooms parking requirements in multifamily when we don't have amenities in the downtown to accommodate people with fewer cars. We don't have a downtown grocery store. Our downtown is not downtown Phoenix. Our downtown is not downtown Tempe. It's Scottsdale. And Scottsdale, I think, is, is unique. And it's something that, it doesn't have to be like those cities. And so reducing, okay, the one, okay, the three bedroom from two to 1.9, yeah, I don't love it. The reduction for the two bedroom from two to 1.7, I think Commissioner Scarborough nailed it and, on that one. And, and the, the point about the grocery store amenities in downtown is also something that Commissioner Scarborough raised, so I really like that. The other stuff I want to talk about on multifamily is that, is the guest parking. So we were given a list. We were told for a while that, that city staff had selected 11 neighboring or nearby or valley municipalities and compared requirements to. We got those yesterday. And it kind of raised the question in my mind of, as I was looking through those names and I was like, what, what, what do we want to be? Well, which direction do we want to go? Do we want to go towards like, you know, some of those denser places or do we want to go in a different direction? Do we want to be, and I think the answer is we want to be uniquely Scottsdale. So what is, what is Scottsdale and what is, how is that differentiated? Well, I think that Scottsdale is a place where people do rely on cars to get to the downtown to shop, tourism. So many things we do down there. So when you think about guest parking and not having any guest parking, it would probably poll at 90% or whatever the number would be, that we need some sort of guest parking. City staff provided the comparison of those cities today and I went and looked at those. And even Tempe, Tempe, which has two tiers of parking, of guest parking requirements for its multifamily across its municipality, they even have a point one, point one parking spot for every unit for multifamily in the densest part of Tempe. So even, so nobody wants our parking in downtown Scottsdale to be like Tempe's in the Milllet Avenue area. So we've got to get that up. So then you look at, okay, well then we, we add one guest parking spot for, for eight units. That's, that's not, that, that to me doesn't seem sufficient. There's people that talk about one out of four. I, I think it was when this commission just recently had looked at the Kimsey project, the triangle. That was passed by city, by the city council at one parking spot per four units, if I'm not, if I'm not incorrect. And people were pretty happy with that. And so we're looking at one to eight. And I think there's, I think there's some room for improvement there. Some people raise, you know, and, and it is, you know, if we took out the cities that we don't want to be trending towards and maybe want to be, you know, keep our Scots, keep us Scottsdale, that, that average of, of one to six or whatever it was, one to five, that is going to change. So those are some thoughts that I had. I do think, as I mentioned at the beginning of this, that the guest spots being accessible, if you, if you put guest spots, if you put guest parking spots and they're behind a barrier or a gate of some sort, you might as well not even put them. Or at least reduce them because they're just not going to be accessed. And then one question I had for city staff is, we talked about the overlay. The, does, does the, does the overlay affect, so now I'm, now I'm going to a question here. Does the, does the downtown overlay affect parking requirements? Maybe this is for Mr. Clough or Mr. Curtis. Does that affect any of the parking requirements? Or is it just the distinction that we're talking about between downtown and not downtown, or Old Town and not Old Town? Is that totally irrelevant? As far as in-lu requirements and things of that sort?
Sure, yes. Chair Lassio and Commissioner Graham and commissioners. The, the downtown overlay does open up more options to accommodate parking requirements. For example, the downtown overlay introduces the in-lu parking program as well as the downtown overlay waivers. That, it doesn't specifically relate to these multifamily residential requirements that we're talking about. However, the downtown overlay waivers allows certain residential units to be added to an existing property without providing parking. Currently allows, you know, if you, if you have a property in the downtown overlay, you could add four residential units without having to provide parking at all. So that's kind of a, an example of the impact that the downtown overlay waiver has. However, specific to these ratios for multifamily residential, it, it does not have any direct impact.
Yeah, because I think, Mr. Clough, if we were talking about that, we're going to go get to the downtown overlay or to the in-lu parking, I should say. And that was looking at as being, as, as being reduced. Is that correct? So we can kind of worry less about that?
That's correct. Chair Lassio and Commissioner Graham, the, the downtown overlay is proposing to be reduced and the in-lu parking program is being modified by limiting the property size and then the types of parking credits that are available.
Okay. So those, those are my questions and maybe I, I might have more, but those are also my comments. And Mr. Chair Lassio, I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Vice Chair, anything?
I'll, I'll keep my comments brief because I think the other commissioners hit all these on the, all these nails on the head. I, I guess I'd like to just repeat Commissioner Scarborough's mention of the reduction of the two-bedroom unit. I, I just don't see that that's going to be a, a positive thing. I would say that most people that live in the downtown area that would have a two-bedroom isn't like a, you know, parents with a young child in that, that second bedroom. I'm sure that it's, you know, two income earners that may have two cars. So I think that keeping that at the, the two mark is, is probably more appropriate. The guest parking, obviously from, you know, photos that I'm seeing here that one of the speakers had sent in, you know, this is a huge problem. And it, it spills out into the neighborhood and it's not fair for the, for those adjacent property owners. So is that numbers one per six, one per eight, one per 10? Again, I don't know. I think it's, I'll fall back on my earlier comment about the parking analysis to, to understand what, what we need to do from, from here to make a good decision. So that, that's all I had on the multifamily. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Higgs?
Yes, thank you. I think we've all reiterated the fact of the dual, at least dual income. I can't even say household. This doesn't necessarily need to be family, I guess, but people living in multifamily. So it is important to think about that. And again, the, the trends for looking at studies, which look at the trends post-COVID and how that's impact, how impacted how people are living multifamily. But one question I have, and I don't know who can answer this, is when it comes to the multifamily guest parking requirements, is it the management or ownership of that multifamily property? Or is it a, a city rule or ordinance that determines when it comes to overnight parking? And I ask that because I was considering purchasing, where some good friends of mine live in South Scottsdale, amazing newer, energy efficient condos, great, great complex. They do have some guest parking, but no one can park overnight. And there's no other place to park. There's not even a safe parking lot for miles. There's nowhere to park. And if I want to have a guest or anybody wants to have a guest that comes in from, out of town and my whole family's out of town, they wouldn't be able to park anywhere. And that's something to, to keep in mind. Again, I don't, and maybe I'm, I'm talking through my question, but I don't know who determines that overnight part. So yeah, they could park there during the day, but heaven forbid would they want to stay for a day or two because you can't. And there are so many stories. It's a battle with their HOA and people's cars getting towed and it's a disaster. And that deterred me from purchasing a half million dollar two-bedroom condo, you know, so. But that's silly, but that's, you know, impacting real estate for, for things like that. So I think the overnight part of it is an important component.
Very good. Oh, Commissioner Scarborough's got one more comment?
I do apologize, but Commissioner Higgs did remind me of one last item that I want to make sure it gets included here is that we look at those condo projects that are small and those are, could be considered townhouses and not multifamily. And so I would also want cluster housing, townhouses included in this guest parking requirement. So I, I just want to make sure I added that last bit in. Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely. And then my only comment on, I, I think everybody's already made all the comments that I would have made on multifamily. One of the things that I think it's important is for us to get the parking right for residents because if we had too low of a parking for residents and we increased the number of guest parking spaces, guess where residents are going to go if they have two cars? They're going to go to those guest spots. And then those guest spots don't become guest spots, they become resident spots. So getting that balance correct is probably part of the art and part of the science. So if there's nothing else on multifamily, then we'll move to the next section? That was good. We did that quickly. Office. Let's move to office. We're going to go opposite direction this time. Commissioner Higgs, if you have any comments on office?
Just, just a quick one. I can't remember which, one of our speakers, if it was Ms. Wilson, one, Ms. Simonson, one of them mentioned that one space per 200 square feet. When you, when I think of a standard call center, it's pretty packed, the amount of people that you have on top of each other. I don't know, maybe post-COVID, that's different now, but that, that might not be, that might not be enough. That was the only comment that I had.
Sure. Vice Chair Young?
Thank you. And again, I think that this particular topic was in specific to call centers. And, you know, I'm familiar with the, what used to be a very large call center here in Old Town that, again, you could shoot a cannon through that place and not hit a person. I think that that particular market has shifted. I think a lot of companies, and I'm speculating, I, I'm not in that business, but I think that they've realized that they can have employees doing call center sort of things remotely from their homes, right? Instead of going into a big office space and doing it in, in a big office environment like that. So I, again, we're in a weird time right now. I mean, the, the office environment, you know, I think a lot more people are staying at home in their apartments, in their townhouses. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but I think that making these sorts of adjustments need to be taken into consideration, current trends with how call centers are functioning in, you know, in our real world today. So that's all I had on that one.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Graham?
Oh, thank you, Chair Lassio. I really appreciate that. The, one thing I, I will say about call center, I have a client who is a call center. And we've talked about work from home situations. And he says that, about the fall off? He says that they're coming back into the office more and more. The, the debate or the question of whether or not they're working from home more is kind of irrelevant though. Because the question is if, if you meet that industry, if you meet that industry definition, then you have, and you, you would buy the space you would need. You would, you wouldn't rent too much space. And then because of just the necessity of how much space they need in that particular part, in that particular square footage. So I think this is a good, this is a good change. And, you know, plus we, I think we all know here that Phoenix area is, what, top five in the country? Call center concentrations, at least maybe top three. So I think this is a good thing. I will say that. So I think staff, I think staff was good to draw attention to this, which is appreciated. Thank you, Chair Lassio.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair. All my comments have already been said by the commissioners, so I'll yield.
Very good. Commissioner Otte?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Graham says that his client says that call center callers are coming back in. And my experience is that they say they're not. But it doesn't matter because he makes an excellent point. Tenants are going to lease as much space as they need. If all people come in, they need more, if they, fewer, they need less. But if, if you design it like this, if you, if you schedule the parking like this, if the call centers can't be rented out and have to be reconfigured for larger offices, it's not like you're short on parking spaces. You will have an excess, but those ex, that excess can be used elsewhere. So this is, you know, if there's one part of this I could go along with, based on what little I know, this would be it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Otte. And I don't think I have anything additional that I can add that the commissioners didn't already state on the office call center types. We'll move to the downtown overlay waiver. Commissioner Otte?
My question was on. My question was on exempting single units. I didn't understand why that would be, you know, the reduced to the 500 square feet or one dwelling unit. I don't see why those would be, you know, why you wouldn't just drop it down to zero. But that's a question, not a comment.
Very good. Commissioner Higgs? We're going to zigzag this time. We're going to do something different. Throw everybody off, keep everybody awake. My burrito's starting to kind of set in, and I'm starting to get a little bit tired.
And here I was ready to say everybody's, everybody's made the same comment so I would have made, because I actually don't have any. So I, yeah.
Very good. Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Alessio. I guess I'm trying to just understand, and this is a question for Mr. Clough, of how did staff come to the decision of 500 square feet versus the current waiver amount of 2,000 square feet?
Chair Alessio and Commissioner Scarborough, what we looked into on this, initially, we did think about completely reducing this down to zero for both the dwelling units and the commercial square footage. And then, you know, considering the original intent of it, and the fact that there's a lot of these smaller Main Street-type properties that are already very restricted in what they can do on their small lots that, that have buildings going to property lines. And there may be the opportunity where someone is wanting to do a small addition, maybe it's, they need some extra storage area, or some area for equipment, or something like that. It would, it would be nice to still have the ability to provide some flexibility for those types of situations. So that's, that's where we came up with saving 500 square feet, which would be considered a relatively small addition, and most likely would have not much of a parking demand associated with it. And then, and then the dwelling unit, specific to the one dwelling unit, is leaving the possibility for maybe some type of a potential work-live situation, where you just have one unit on top of your shop, and, and you can live and work in the, in the same location.
And just to be clear, on the dwelling unit, there is no restriction in size. So that could be, if your building is a 3,000-square-foot building, you could build a 3,000-square-foot unit above it?
500?
No, that's, that's commercial space.
Yeah, Commissioner Scarborough, that's correct. There's no square footage limit on the dwelling unit.
Thank you, sir. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Scarborough. We're going to zig back to Commissioner Ute real quick.
If you don't mind, because Commissioner Scarborough's comment was, you know, virtually the same as mine. It was explained, the 500 square feet makes sense, but as is being said, one dwelling unit, you know, only if you can guarantee that they're not going to add a vehicle, which I don't know that you can. I think it might be better just to drop the one dwelling unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Ute. Vice Chair Young?
Mr. Clough's answer to Commissioner Scarborough's question answered my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Young? No, Commissioner Graham, sorry.
They call me Commissioner Graham.
Yes, that's what I should call you as well. Commissioner Graham?
That's my usual name. The, I think it's going in the right direction, so that's all I'll add. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. We'll move to item number six on mine, and that is the in-lu parking. And we're going to start with Commissioner Higgs, because she was, she enjoyed so much last time being early in the, in the mix.
You know, I don't have, I don't have any comments or questions on this, but I'm curious to hear what others have.
Very good. Vice Chair Young?
My comment is, so in Mr. Clough's report, I saw that there was a little over a million dollars that was raised in right around 24 years. And 855 spaces were created with that million-plus-dollar amount. I'm, I'm curious to know, and I guess we're, are we asking questions still?
We can ask questions, we can make comments.
So of those 855 spaces, I know that there's been a couple of new parking garages that were built. Were those done with in-lu dollars, or were they done with other taxpayer dollars to build those, those parking garages? I'm assuming that there was other taxpayer dollars that were involved in that.
Yes, Vice Chair Young and members of the commission, that's correct. The money that was corrected, collected through the in-lu funds was used to supplement other capital projects that were constructing parking. So, you know, with the cost of parking, that, that was not able to cover the full cost associated with construction, but it was used in association with other funds.
Okay. So, and just to clarify, it looks like we had raised a total of $2,913,000. And then we, we still have $308,000 left, and that's what funded the 855 spaces.
Okay, I apologize. I thought I saw 1,506.
Yep, there it is, right there.
Oh.
So, Mr. Clough, we may have a little bit of a discrepancy, and maybe I'm just reading this correctly, but it says from 1985 through 2019. Okay, this one says 2019. Sorry, that's the difference. We generated $2,913,281. This is in my packet, Mr. Clough. And we still have $308,000 left, but 855 spaces were constructed using those funds.
Yes, Chair Alessio and members of the commission, I believe the numbers that you have are accurate. The number that I have on the screen, you're correct, only went through 2009. So I think the additional funds are not included on the slide that I, that it's up on the screen currently.
Gotcha. Okay. And I guess the other question is, has the city purchased additional land that has surface parking on it right now? Because I know that there's some city-owned parcels in the Old Town area that is, just has surface parking on it. It's not structured parking. Were those, were those purchased with some of these dollars?
Vice Chair Young, I'm not specifically aware of any of those lots that were purchased through the use of in-lu funds. You're correct, we do have a number of surface lots throughout the city with public parking on it, but I'm, I'm not aware of any expenditure of these funds for those surface lots.
Okay. Well, I guess the reason for my questions here is, you know, the in-lu payments that were made for these, and I actually, again, had a conversation with Commissioner Scarborough about this, that maybe the, the in-lu payments is still valid, maybe just the number, the cost of buying those in-lu payments is not the right number. Because it seems like what would be trending is structured parking, because it's a better use of land to get more parking on, rather than surface lots. So I guess my opinion is, maybe, maybe consider keeping the in-lu parking credits and payments for those, but instead increasing the dollar value of that purchase of that parking stall. So that, that could generate the amount of funds to actually buy a valid parking stall that you're, you're in lieu of. So anyway, that's, that's just my thought on that.
Your thoughts? Very good. Commissioner Graham?
Oh, thank you, Chair Alessio. So in looking at this slide, I'm going to ask it, Vice Chair Young asked this, but I'm going to ask it slightly differently. The 855 spaces, that, what does that include? That includes some parking garage parking? Does that include anywhere else beyond that? And I guess that question would be for, I don't know if you were able to hear me just then. That question is for probably Mr. Clough, I would suppose. Mr. Curtis?
Mr. Chairman, this, this is Randy Grant. I can answer that. The parking spaces that were created were both in the Third Avenue garage and in the Second Street and Brown parking structure. There may have been a few spaces that were created on surface lots, but it was predominantly those two structures. Thank you.
Okay. And my other question is, it talks about approximately 800 in-lu spaces, and then it says about 500 spaces permanently credited. What's the difference between permanently credited and not permanently credited, impermanently credited?
Commissioner Graham, that, that would be the difference between the permanent purchases, which is the 496 spaces, as opposed to leased spaces, which would be credits that were issued at one point in time, but are no longer in place, because the leases expired or were otherwise discontinued.
Okay, so they, so we're distinguishing between construction and acquisition, aren't we?
Commissioner Graham, it would be the distinction between properties who purchased the, the full cost of the space, and, and that credit remains with the property in perpetuity, as opposed to those who did a short-term lease for only the time that they needed it, and then the credit disappears after that.
I think the, one of the misgivings that I've, you know, I've looked into the in-lu parking program, and I think, I think, I think it's just kind of the nature of the program, but one of the misgivings I've, I've sort of sensed from people is, it's just not totally clear how, where's the money going? How does it work? How do we benefit from it? And that's, you know, that's by definition, if you look at the mission of the program, like, that's kind of what you're going to get. It's almost impossible to avoid that. So I think that anything that strengthens the transparency, the understandability of the in-lu program would be beneficial for the city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Alessio. First bullet point is to eliminate the allowance for new permanent in-lu parking credits. I'm, I have a mixed view on this one. I don't know if I 100% agree with removing this option. I do think we can all agree that structured parking is the only option we have in downtown going forward. And I saw that there were pay-in-lu options, if, $14,000 for surface parking, but we're only getting $13,800 right now because of how the inflation of the initial 7,500 has come about. I think we have the wrong number. I don't think we have necessarily the wrong program. I think developers should have the opportunity to do a one-time buy-in, but I believe it should be at the, the full tilt of what a structured parking space should be. So if it's $45,000 or $50,000 a space, then that's what, in my opinion, should be contributed. And that's something that should be marked to market every year, not worry about inflation. You reach out to contractors, you get understanding of what structured parking's coming in at, that's the new baseline you move forward. So I'm not necessarily in favor of eliminating the program. I just don't think we're accumulating enough money to become, to have a substantial pool, because I believe our, our real benefit here is to find partnerships with private development and be able to take down a, a layer of structured parking and make it public parking, and work with private development to find more structured parking, more conveniently located throughout downtown. The leasing of spaces, I don't mind that being maintained. I guess I have a question, and that is, how, how is that funded? What is the fee somebody pays on an annual basis? And I don't know if this is for Mr. Clough or Mr. Graham, but what is the cost to someone in the downtown area to lease a space on an annual basis?
Commissioner Scarborough, the, the fees associated with the leased spaces are, are less, and they're based on a monthly rate per space. And there are different options for that as well. There can be, for example, nighttime-only spaces, or full-day spaces. So I, I believe currently, the monthly rate for a single space is, is around $380, and then for the nighttime only is around about $160 on a, on a monthly basis.
Okay, so it would take at $380 a month, 118 months, to gain about $45,000 into a fund. So it'd take us just less than 10 years to get the same money we could get upfront in today's dollars. I don't know if I'm, would be supportive of removing the one-time pay-in-lu. I think you can get the dollars upfront. I understand that the leasing gives you some sense of in perpetuity, or as long as the demand is there. I don't think getting rid of that option, I think keeping both options is a good idea. I just think if it's going to be a one-time pay-in-lu, it's full tilt. And that allows us to bolster that fund and be able to partner with private development and really make impactful changes to more conveniently located parking in the downtown area.
Good point.
And then at a maximum property size, those are my only questions. Everything else I'm relatively in line with. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Ute?
Thank you, sir. I thought, responding to what Commissioner Scarborough had just said, is it leasing in perpetuity? I thought I had heard that the leases, at least in some case, had termin, or would terminate.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I was speaking theoretically, that it was on-demand, so you would lease as long as you needed, but ultimately, you could be there for 30 years and be leasing the entire 30 years.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. And yet, when the next person comes along, the next tenant comes along after those 30 years, he would have to lease those same parking spaces. Again, my issue is, you know, I think in-lu parking makes sense, but at the same time, if it doesn't make sense, if you, if it goes away, keeping just the leasing option, that's great. I would want to be convinced, I would want to be assured, that when somebody adds 10,000 square feet, you know, we know that creates some demand for parking, depends on what's going in there. But I would want to be sure that whatever we do, in-lu or not in-lu, that when somebody adds square feet, that adds demand for parking, that they would also provide the supply of parking. So is, you know, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Ute. I agree with what has been said here on the in-lu parking. I think there's lots of great opportunities. Well, once we get a parking study to understand where it is, we might want to do some private-public partnerships to add some additional parking. I think there's a really nice opportunity. That $45,000 a parking space, structured parking space, may end up becoming less, because when you're building a larger project, and you're building a parking structure, and you're building more square feet, you might be able to get that for a lower price per square foot compared if you're just doing a standalone structured parking. So I like the in-lu parking program. I, I like the fact that there's leases available. I like the fact that you can purchase some. I think our parking study will tell us where we probably need to have more, and where we might already have an adequate amount. So I think that a parking study would help us bolster our in-lu parking program. Seeing if there's no additional comments on the in-lu program, we will move to our final item, which is the special public, excuse me, special public improvements. If you kind of read through what that is, I think that's, there it is, it came up there. We'll start off with Commissioner Ute.
Yes, that, that works for me. It makes sense to give developers full credit for the above-ground parking structures. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Ute. Commissioner Higgs?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Very good. Vice Chair Young?
Thanks, Chair Alessio. I think this is a great one. I, again, when I went back to my initial comments, this is one of the ones that I really didn't have a huge issue with. Actually, I don't really have an issue with, because I think this is really going to incentivize, and I think this, this one item here could solve some of the other problems that the other parking categories are, are experiencing. You know, if we, as a city, start to want to incentivize private developers to have more public parking, I think that's great. And again, I think that, that could solve some of the problems that we're, we're seeing. So I think this is definitely a step in the right direction.
Perfect. Commissioner Graham? Perfect. Commissioner Graham?
I have a couple of questions here, and thank you, Chair Lassio. The requirements for this, how do we, how are the, is there any structure, Mr. Clough, on where spots are located, where the actual public parking is located? And maybe that's not a very clear question. What I'm trying to say is that public parking in one space can be a lot more valuable than somewhere else. Is there any, is there anything to do, is there any consideration for that? Or I guess...
Mr. Graham, this, Brian Clough here, yes, there is, in that there's a, there's a list of requirements in the zoning ordinance that are associated with this program. One of those has to do with the location of those spaces. And usually, when we see these coming forward, they're associated with the development, and there's a development agreement that goes along with it with regard to these special improvement requirements. And the code allows the city council to give final approval of where the public spaces are located within the development. So the council has a discretion to specify, for example, if they want those on the ground level, or if they're okay with them on the second level or in a below-grade level, and that type of item. So it's handled case by case at the discretion of the council.
Okay, so it sounds like that does get addressed at some level. So that brings me a little bit of comfort. And my other question here is, and this is almost related to that, talking about multifamily, talking about multifamily housing, the, we put in guest parking spots behind a gate, or a barrier, or hidden, there's something to sort of stop that or prevent anything like that, where you have public parking spots that are kind of end up sort of, you know, the pretext is public parking, but they end up being hidden or out of sight or obscured, and they're not really available to the public. And it sounds like you're saying that the council has those latitudes in the zoning code. Is that correct?
Commissioner Graham, yes, that's correct. And there also is a specific requirement in the code that the spaces be open and available for public access.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clough. Thank you, Chair Lassio.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Scarborough?
Thank you, Chair Lassio. I have no objections to this special improvements requirement, number six, so no comments. Thank you.
Very good. And I'm on the same page. I think that, I think this is actually a very good part of this text amendment, and it's something that I think that, it sounds like we can all get behind, so that's great. Those are all seven items that were listed. Is there anything else that anybody has, any general comments on before we try to come to a motion? Commissioner Higgs?
I just feel like I should summarize, and I know some have done this, and sometimes I forget to do this, but just again, to thank staff, because I know it took a lot of work to get to this, and we have only spent probably, what, three, three and a half hours talking through it. I'm sure they've put 15 times that amount of time into this, so I appreciate that. So thank you, staff, for that, and your patience for all of our questions that we're throwing at you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Higgs. I think that's a great comment. Any other comments? If not, then I would ask for a motion. After 3 hours and 45 minutes, I'm hoping we can come up with a motion.
We, Mr. ...
Commissioner Graham?
Thank you. I think that we, this is gonna be difficult a little bit, because some of these are not very controversial, and I think there's some consensus on a lot of them. So I just want to be, I guess I just want to caution that we don't paint too broad of a brush stroke when we make these motions, because they're just not, they're not all created equal, are they?
Thank you for the comment. Commissioner Scarborough?
I will, thank you, Chair Lassio. I'm gonna make a motion. Hopefully, this isn't too broad, or brush stroke. I would make a motion to recommend denial of items one through six, based on the discussion that planning commissioners had this evening, and I would make, and recommend approval of number seven, based on discussion this evening to city council.
Very good. So you're make, if I understand, before we move to the, just to clarify, make sure that we can get the motion down, recommend of denial of items one through six, well...
Yeah, I'm going off of the list of seven that we started with.
Right. That was my question, yeah.
No, it's a great question. So, point of clarity, Mr. Curtis, in our packet, we have seven items, and it's, the multifamily's broken into two different ones. Up on our screen, we have six different items.
Might we simply say that we recommend denial of all items except the special improvements requirements? That way, we don't have to worry about numbers.
Okay. I think that probably is, that probably works.
I will accept that as the new verbiage for my motion. Mr. Padilla, is that okay?
Yes, you've just simply rephrased your motion. That's fine.
Okay. So recommend denial for all items except special improvement requirements.
Very good. So we have a motion, and Mr. Curtis has a finger up, and so does Mr. Commissioner Otte. So Commissioner Otte?
He's not going to second it, so...
Yeah, he can't second, so...
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Scarborough, you did the exception of the special improvements, but what do you want to do with special improvements? Recommend approval?
Thank you, Mr. Curtis, yes. So to restate for Mr. Padilla, it would be a recommendation for denial for all items, except a recommendation of approval for special improvement requirements, based on the discussion we had this evening.
Did you want to add any verbiage in your motion? Maybe it's not appropriate to, that the reasoning behind the recommendation for denial about the need for a parking study?
I hear an amendment. So to further clarify this motion, is that the denial was based on the need for a updated parking study that takes into account the scope of these items that we reviewed this evening.
It's an appropriate motion?
It's an appropriate motion. It just needs a second.
Okay, very good. So, Mr. Curtis, I wanted to make sure that you, that we stated that clear enough for you to be able to gather that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of planning commission, staff will comb through the, what we know will be the relevant issues that you addressed throughout your deliberations, and pass that on to, I guess, augment what you mean by the discussions this evening.
Thank you. Very good. So just restate, and we have a motion to deny all of the items except for special improvement requirements, which is a motion to approve, and the denials are because of the lack of information, and we recommend that they do a comprehensive parking study that includes all of the elements that are in the denied portion of the motion. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Otte?
I second.
We have a second by Commissioner Otte. Do we need any more discussion?
Chair Lassio, I have...
Of course. Commissioner Graham?
You know the answer is, we need more discussion. You knew the answer to that.
I did, I did. I was looking over here, but then, thank you for reminding me that we need more discussion.
This is for Mr. Padilla. So we have a motion to deny, you know, we heard the language, because of XYZ reasons. But I don't necessarily agree with all those reasons. So does that mean I would vote against the motion? But that doesn't sound like, that would appear like I'm actually supporting, it would appear that vote would be supporting the text amendments as they're proposed.
Your vote will be either in favor or against the motion.
You could say that's anything.
That's all it represents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Padilla.
Very good. Any other comments on the motion? Seeing as they're not, then we'll go ahead and ask the liaison to do a roll-call vote.
Chair Lassio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Young?
Yes.
Commissioner Higgs?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
No.
And Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. Motion passes five to one.